Here it is.
The case of the missing water bottle.
Oh, gosh. I had to backtrack everything. I know, silly, huh?
Yeah.
Right on the feet.
Oh, my chief of the. That really was funny. Yep, I'm gonna say it. No, I don't feel it. See if I'm gonna say it. I hope Olivia makes it in time.
You say Barbara's not in the call.
Correct. That's what I heard. Barbara, no Barbara. No Barbara. What's that? Oh. Do you have Barbara's schedule for when she's out of town?
I know she's coming back with iron.
That's Memorial Day weekend.
But do you know what day she's back?
I think it's.
That's what I heard from someone. She didn't tell me that directly. Is there?
Oh, she comes back. She's back 25th. On my calendar, it was her house through the 24th.
Okay.
Through the 24th.
I would just look at my calendar. I'd be like.
Okay.
She was the other miss.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Mel is out of the. She actually got cooked.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I've talked to her on the phone. She didn't sound good at all.
Oh, so sorry.
That's not good. No. That's not good at all. Has she been? Much lower.
Yes. Last Thursday, she was supposed to go. Actually, it was last Wednesday. So last Thursday, she left. She was going to fly on Thursday to. I thought it was last January to her wedding show.
She's gonna get married? Oh, nice.
And her fiance was. Except Wednesday afternoon, she. And her family was like, you didn't want her to come. And she felt like frightening. And she did that.
Well, at least they both have it together at the same time instead of, you know.
Make sure you're ready, right? There's any doubt.
This is true. Melissa, I have to tell you, I'm so happy I'm not sharing.
I bet you are.
Yeah, probably, actually.
Like, what the heck?
So congratulations.
I literally was like. I was on vacation, probably.
Okay, well, don't let it fluster you. Just.
Don't what?
Don't let it fluster you. Just stay cool.
That one's done.
You have, you have our support.
Thank you, thank you. I might need it. We all, we might, we might all need support.
No kidding. You just like, you just look at me and go, and seen. And I'm trying to. And seen. Like, my kids that I joke when they're like rambling too much or arguing with me too much. Like. Like, and see. Yeah. Ah. Turn around and walk away. Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, do that to a couple of these people in here.
There he is.
Man, you just sneak in.
Two, two portion meal.
That's hilarious, man. You've got it down to the minute.
Don't hit any traffic. Okay. Are we gonna start on time?
I don't know.
Are we on, are we on?
We're not on. No, it doesn't say yet. We're not gonna be on air.
We're not gonna be on air.
Oh, that's right. He said to start whenever you want.
You can start whenever you want to.
Jose, will you be ready to hand me that list when it's time?
Or.
Wait, or Ben? Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting.
Hello, good morning, good evening. Hi, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting and call the meeting to order. I do wanna let the public know that due to technical difficulties, we will not have any live stream tonight off of our city website, but live stream will be available on YouTube and Zoom, and the audio will be uploaded to the website as soon as possible. It just will not be a live stream tonight. So thank you for joining us, all of you. We're happy to have you here. And with that, can we have a city council roll call, please?
Counselor Baxter.
Present.
Counselor Bossman.
Present.
Counselor Buell.
Here.
Mayor Proten Yusuf.
Present.
And Mayor Knowsworthy.
And as a result of Mayor Knowsworthy's absence, I will be leading the meeting tonight. So thank you for joining us. May we please have the introduction of the translator?
Counselor Yusuf, we have Mateo with us, who will be doing the introduction.
Thank you very much. My name is Mateo Lozano, I'm with the CLC. Below, you will see a globe icon appear to the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. Please choose the language of your heart. And I go, and just in time, I'll just go ahead and skip this because I'm sure that y'all are aware of the interpretation. So I'm gonna go ahead and repeat that in Spanish. Hola, mi nombre es Mateo Lozano. Abajo, en la parte derecha, ustedes van a ver un icono que se ve como un globo. Por favor, escogen su lengua de corazón y me deja saber si tienen algunas problemas escuchándome. Please let me know if you have any issues hearing me. And with that, I'll just go ahead and let the host pass. Give me the interpreter privileges.
Okay, all set.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to public participation. And when you're ready, Ben, you can bring me the list. I wanna make a couple of comments. This is important for the community to hear this, please. I wanna be very clear that in Agenda 12.0 regarding the Citizens Voice Initiative proposed ordinance, it does not provide the opportunity for public comment in that section. So individuals who are here to speak towards the citizens' petition should speak now during public participation. I also wanna take this opportunity to be very clear to the public that the citizen process in our charter allowing for the petition process that has been completed calls for the city council to call for a public hearing. And that is precisely what we will be doing tonight in Section 12.0. It's our first opportunity to talk about this in public session. So that is what we do first, is the citizen, as a council, we talk about the process and whether we will hold a public hearing. So we will be talking about that later tonight. So I, again, I encourage those of you who want to speak to that to speak now. I wanna remind the public, please, that we are requesting civility in your comments. And personally, we find it much more effective and impactful when you are civil. We will allow three minutes per individual to comment, and I will be holding you to that time limit, please. I will ask you to please finish quickly once we hit that three-minute mark. I will, we, as a council, we do not intend to respond from the dais, and we will be taking comments both live and virtually tonight. But we'll start with live public participation, and I will start with Mr. Thomas E. Golf. If you'll please join us at the podium.
So my name is Thomas E. Golf. I reside at 121 River Oaks Drive, Unit A, here in Durango, so city resident. My item concerns, item number 12, so I appreciate the introduction because there is some lack of clarity about exactly how that's going to play out. So I appreciate that and the opportunity. So the fact is, the city has received a validated citizens' initiative. As confirmed by the city clerk, this initiative is a non-invasive ordinance that's being proposed. It simply solidifies the public's voice in matters that involve critical infrastructure, in this case, police and fire stations in the downtown area. In other words, it would mandate public hearings on these project proposals. It does not take away or modify any approval authority that otherwise and therefore will still apply. It simply states that the public must be heard before a decision is made. Now, the city charter, Article 7, Section 9, and I'll read this quickly. In the case of an initiative ordinance, which this is, the council shall, within 30 days after the attachment of the clerk's certificate of sufficiency, either pass said ordinance without any change in substance or to call a special election to be held within 90 days. We all know this procedure. I think it's been probably reviewed by all of us. The agenda documentation for 12.2 this evening, however, only gives two options. Either one, set a public hearing to take public input on said initiative, and this is not contemplated by the city charter, or number two, direct staff to prepare resolution to hold a special election. So specifically, the city charter empowers and authorizes the council to act on adoption. Yet this is not even being proposed by today's documentation, and that's a little bit disappointing to hear. Given the overwhelming supportive response to the initiative, as documented in the number of signatures verified and the total number collected, I ask that our city council take decisive action to adopt the ordinance as initiated. Unlike a staff or council-submitted ordinance proposal, which must pass through public hearing and readings, Citizens Initiative is different in that the public has already expressed their support and opinion. And our city charter allows for immediate adoption by the city council within 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and I am a city resident. I have two issues to bring to you tonight. First, taking 50 to 70 parking spaces from the Smith complex and making six pickleball courts is robbing Peter to pay Paul and not a wise plan, in my opinion. Pitting pickleball players against children's activities is not a wise plan, in my opinion. The proposed six pickleball courts in the parking lot at Smith complex is shocking to me. Losing 50 to 70 spaces and asking toddlers and grandparents with chairs, mothers with coolers, equipment, carrying infant carriers to walk from the concert hall to Smith complex is a mistake. The parking for youth activities is already, it already spills over onto the road, and by adding six pickleball courts will only exacerbate the traffic problems. Pickleball, as of February 2021, was in the plan for Three Springs, and I understand the pressure city council receives from very passionate pickleball players. Pickleball's wonderful. I have no problems with that. But I urge you to engage other stakeholders in this discussion and find other sites for pickleball, perhaps an empty parking lot across from the library, or go back to Three Springs. My second issue is the collaboration of the Fire and the Police Department. I take you back to 1974 and the arson fire, which destroyed an entire block on Main Street. I don't think any of you were here then. It killed Nick Parks and Gail Emerson, the Roundhouse Fire of the 80s, the Central Hotel Fire, and the Seasons Fire. Quick responses by the Fire Department saved the downtown businesses. The Police and Fire Department are a team, and, and in my eyes, my heroes. The Police Department lives in a shoebox with a leaky roof. If you haven't been over there to see, every closet has been converted into a little desk. I urge you to go. When I heard Chief Dottery say, "It's cost-effective to have Fire and Police under one roof," it made financial sense to me as a former mayor and city councillor. Have you asked Chief Brammer what are the needs of the officers? The chief has not been at the table, as far as I know, and his voice has been silent. I ask you why. It's one thing to say that you support the Police Department, but it's something else to say actions speak louder than words. I urge you to take action and bring the chief to the table and to get his views. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Wright.
Good evening. Ted Wright, 2701 West Second in Durango. I sure am anxious to hear some backstory from Greg Hope and, and the letter from Gary that he's written because he was a petition circulator. He went out and got 87 signatures, and you have 1,118 signatures that, I'll tell you, it made it a lot easier to get those signatures when that voice just felt managed the whole way. Managed by what? Well, managed by a special interest, really. I mean, 9R, I'll give you a forum, which became sort of a faux room. And it was managed by a special interest in a three-way deal that was emerging. Then the DFPD, well, they did a managed voice opportunity, a forum that was more faux again. And that leaves the city to adopt this and bring our voice forward. It was a lot easier to get signatures because people felt excluded, that their voice wasn't being heard. Whatever that is, you know, allow all voices hear all sides. What you wanna do, and we wanna work side by side, listening, allowing the voice, equitably allowing, equitably hearing, legitimate opportunity to provide a larger view. We invited everybody to listen to Minnacozy. It was a agnostic economics. You go, wow, what's that mean? Well, that's like, I'm gonna take an economic MRI. The results are gonna be, well, I'm gonna broaden our vision. We're gonna learn from ourselves. We're gonna work together. We're going to make a better place because we will listen to each other and join together. That means all of us, county, so forth. When you listen to the Minnacozy study, that is definitely a must-do. So what I think happened is that the people never had a representative. The voices dispersed, managed by two-minute bites, three-minute bites, little bites. No cohesive representation was ever afforded the public in any setting regarding this, and it's very complicated. You can tell us that. Are you leaning this way or that? This way or that? Are you leaning toward the voice that does not silence any other voices? That only brings us to the chorus? That's what we want. Invite, allow the voices. And I think you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Schroder, please.
Good evening. Gary Schroder, 125 Alamo Drive, here in Durango, a resident. I was a petitioner for the Citizens Voice Initiative. Like, as Ted mentioned, I collected 87 signatures. So I just wanted to share some of my experience with you all. I got some of my signatures from tabling, but most of them were from canvassing neighborhoods. I visited four different neighborhoods to get a pulse on how people felt about this issue. My experience was that I would come up to a door, introduce myself, mention I was petitioning. My first question is, have you heard about the Fire Department's purchasing the 9R property on 12th Street? And oftentimes, I would get an eye roll. After some conversation, at least 90% of the people I talked to were unhappy with either 9R, DFPD, and/or the city and the way this process has excluded the public, and they were very happy to sign the petition, given the possibility of finally having some voice. The handful of people that chose not to sign, they, many of them, there were, there were various reasons. Some worked for 9R, DFPD, or the city. And then some were just frustrated with the process and felt it was time for DFPD to have a home, even though they still didn't, were thrilled about the process that's taken place. Everybody I talked to, as, as I do, was supportive of Fire and Police and want them to have a new home in an appropriate place. So given my informal survey from residents in canvassing, if this initiative were to go to ballot, it would be a landslide win. In a month's time, we got 22% of the people who voted in the last election to sign the petition. In a perfect world, there'd be city of Durango representatives on the DFPD board, but since they're not, this is our best chance to have some public input into the process. I encourage you to save the city taxpayers' time and $55,000 by adopting this ordinance as soon as possible. It's not too late to say yes to public participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Ken Francis.
Good evening, Ken Francis. I live at 820 East 7th Avenue, and I grew up behind Home Slice Pizza in North Main. Been around a while. And I want to acknowledge also the firemen and the police. Everybody that I work with, I'm one on the petition side, agrees the Fire and the Police need a new place. It's just, we think it's the wrong location. That's all. We have nothing against the Fire, the firemen or the police. Over 1,000 Durango citizens, all registered to vote, have spoken. They want a public hearing, a public hearing, a legal public hearing. That's what we're asking for because the land use code has a void in it. You know, what's being proposed is an industrial use. And yes, and I'll say, an industrial use at the proposed historic high school campus. And the support is, is much greater than we saw in the petitions for getting it relocated, or at least having a hearing, having a say-so. Let's take, for example, a private developer had purchased that property and submitted a proposal for down, for developing that property down there. And this is what that private developer would have to go through. A sizable, this is what they're proposing, a sizable garage and parking lots for large and medium-sized trucks and employee housing vehicles, a large mechanical building for repairing, maintaining vehicles, lots of equipment, outdoor spaces for training and testing of noisy equipment, a large washing and cleaning station for vehicles, equipment, possibly hazardous materials, very wide driveways onto and from public streets, spatial lighting, signage, and traffic control measures, including sirens for quick and safe access onto and through already congested areas, reconstruction of public streets to allow larger vehicles to safely navigate at speeds exceeding normal traffic flow. Eight, the potential elimination of many public parking spaces, and most certainly, the elimination of several mature trees and the disruption of several popular events and access to Buckley Park. So if a private developer came through, they would have to go through the current land use code. It's an industrial use. It certainly isn't residential. It certainly isn't business. It is certainly is not professional office. It is a void in the city's land use code. Regardless of the location, this proposal of this proposed developer would have to go through this process regardless of where they're doing it. Now it's being proposed in the downtown area. And the city would require the public and the demand, would require a public hearing. The public would demand a public hearing. And first of all, the whole thing is inconsistent with the city's own adopted plans. Council does not need to spend thousands of dollars for an election to make the city's development code fair for public and private developers. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. And our citizens, we expect fairness and leadership. Please provide the leadership for our central business district and everyone that loves it. You have the power to do the right thing. Please change the land use code. Thank you.
I was hoping you were coming there. Thank you. Lisa Shaw.
Good evening, councilors and staff. My name is Lisa Shaw, and I live at 1309 East 3rd Avenue, Number 35 in Durango. City resident, neighbor, here also from the, from the Citizens Voice Durango. I just wanted to express that the Citizens Initiative is a response, as my colleagues have said, by Citizens Voice Durango to the Durango Fire Protection's recent purchase of 9R property. We'd like to acknowledge there are many complex issues involved in the purchase of this site, clearly. But this initiative serves to secure public engagement in the use of public funds for the development of sites and facilities by protective services, both Fire and Police in the central business district. Citizens Voice Durango really affirms that both Fire and Police are in need of new facilities that are efficient, well-situated, and meet the needs of these critical safety teams. We are absolutely in favor of the DFPD having a new downtown fire station, so long as the public has a voice in that decision. So we strongly urge the members of city council to adopt the Citizens Initiative as certified. Why do we recommend you adopt this? Because over 1,100 Durango voters have asked you to do this. And it would show that you are listening to the voices of the voters and who want to be heard in this process. When I stood on the street and collected signatures for the initiative, I had the opportunity to talk with well over 100 people, and everyone I talked to supports the Fire District having a new facility that serves the central business district. It's very important because I really want Fire and Police to hear that as well. And it's also important to note that there are many county residents who I spoke with who agree with that, and they were disappointed to understand that they were not allowed to sign this petition because they're not city residents. Many of them were business owners in the Durango, in the, in the CBD who live outside of city limits and are not allowed to sign. And since downtown businesses would also be impacted by the locations and the site facilities and planning by the facility, by Police and Fire, their voices also need to be noted. But the reality is, this initiative is not controversial. We are ensuring public participation in a process that unquestionably deserves to include public hearings. Doesn't it make sense that taxpayer spending should always include public hearings? Why shouldn't the public be engaged in assessing these proposals for long-term and significant impact on adjacent properties and neighborhoods? Since it's not controversial, why send it to special election? Why spend $55,000, as the current estimates are running, on an election when the citizens have spoken by signing this initiative? That money could be spent in more effective ways. You, the city councilors, are representatives of us, the people, and you are empowered by the city charter to adopt this, this initiative as proposed by the people. Let's, we have a lot of critical issues ahead in Durango. To solve, we need to work together toward positive solutions. Please, let's move ahead now and adopt this initiative. I really appreciate your time and your attention. Thank you so much.
Nora Fouts, I believe it is? Fouts, sorry.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nora Fouts, and I represent Durango Lacrosse Club. I am the president. It is a youth organization. We support youth players of lacrosse from ages eight all the way through high school. And we are very concerned about this pickleball court that we were unaware of until after the open house was held by Parks and Rec. We have no problem with pickleball courts. We do take an issue with not being engaged. I know in the post-plan that was published in 2010, you know, one of the guidelines is that all youth organizations, sports organizations should be included and engaged as stakeholders when any of our facilities, you know, there's gonna be changes, like taking away 70 parking spaces. If anyone has ever attended a youth sports event at Smith Complex, like we had our annual tournament this weekend. We had about 500 attendees with teams from New Mexico and. with teams from New Mexico and other parts of Colorado, it is really difficult with the parking. And it is, like Sweetie Head brought up, disconcerting to think that we would have mothers with infants and small children, which are really difficult to navigate with through a parking lot, let alone crossing East Eighth from the four parking lots, which are private, by the way. So those spots can be taken away and their usage revoked at any time. So we are asking that Parks and Rec and the city, you know, hold another open house, engage all the stakeholders who utilize that space, and maybe consider a traffic study to see how often we have cars in and out, how this would affect the youth sports organizations and their programs. It is often crowded on a weeknight during practices. Almost all space is filled. So I'm not really sure how, taking away these spots, what our alternative would be. And we have a petition. We just sent it out on Friday night. We already got almost, I think, 170-plus signatures. And we're not against pickleball. We just want to see what other options there are so that we can maintain the safety of our children while they're playing at this field. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lars Hansen.
Good evening. Lars Hansen, city resident. Good evening. I'm here tonight to share some feelings that have welled up in me during this whole process of the police department and the fire department wanting to move into the 9R building. I want to say, first off, I, as so many other citizens, support our police department, our fire department. We wanted to have great facilities, updated, the latest, greatest technology, because they're as big a part of our community as we are. And it makes all kinds of sense. The process, however, has been flawed. And as you've seen, 1,100-plus signatures for the initiative. I urge you all to adopt the initiative. It's been difficult believing in civil, public discourse, community, citizen involvement, and democracy, to have been engaged at the level I've been engaged in, in holding people accountable, accountable, and demanding public process, to experience this feeling of guilt, that I am guilty of insisting on this public dialogue. It is, it is a very strange thing for me to live with. It's a very strange thing for me to sleep with. We have been called names. We have been diminished in the public space by elected officials, and it, simply for insisting on public dialogue, civil, public discourse, something that's the root of this country, democracy. It's a very strange feeling. And I will, it's, we simply wanted to be heard. We had an opinion. And we want to move together. We want to be involved in the decisions. I do. I can speak for myself. I would like to be involved in these decisions, how the taxpayer money is spending, is spent. And, and I have this feeling of, like, being thwarted, and that maybe my voice doesn't matter. But I know my voice is as important as yours, and yours, and yours, and yours, and yours, and yours, and yours, because we are still a democracy. I read this little thing in the paper, I'm going to be quick on this one, read this little comment on an article in the Herald regarding the fire district move to 9R. The guy said, here, I'm sorry, I'm going to go over time. The guy commented, and this is why I'm not on social media, because it gets so inflamed. The guy said, "There's a lot of prominent people in this town who want River City Hall property to be a public space. So therefore, we should do that." And so I'm thinking, so we all bend and kiss the ring to prominent people? So, so I ask you to just kind of like weigh in on this. Think about it. Is it democracy?
Thank you.
I respect that. Thank you. So think about it, please.
Thank you. We're trying to be equitable and fair to everybody. So thank you. Ellen Stein.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Stein. I live at 3314 East Fourth Avenue. I just want to speak to, as well, having been a petitioner with this whole process with Citizens Voice Durango, everything that my friends, newfound friends, and community members support in terms of really just asking you to listen to the public and what we are requesting is so reasonable, and asking you to please implement the ordinance. I don't know that, in fact, your choice is to hold a public hearing. I mean, you can decide to do what you do, but the Citizens Initiative and the charter is very clear. It encourages, you have two choices, to implement the ordinance or send it to a vote. So we are here to encourage you to implement the ordinance. And as Lars so eloquently spoke to, I mean, I've been involved with this. Don't, I know you guys signed up for city council. I didn't necessarily sign up to be fighting for some, for what is democracy, and I feel so strongly about it. I have been working very hard to simply just have us have a voice. And that is what it feels like, whether you're in Durango or in Ukraine, our democracy is at risk globally. And so we are simply asking you to allow us to have a voice. And similarly, we support the fire department, this process. These are publicly funded entities. First, with how 9R handled the sale and disposition of that building, they did not seek public input more on whether they should sell the building. They got a yes. They didn't, they thought they had a great idea. And it's, it's awful, because I know people on the fire department board that feel like, "We're going to love this." And it's like, guess what? We don't love this, because there was not adequate input. The Buckley Park scenario of the line where the subdivision came down, it went through planning, it went through you guys, and it wasn't until a citizen, Jules Harris and some other people, said, "Where is this line actually falling in the park?" It was falling halfway through the sledding hill. That's not okay. You need citizen support. And so, and the creative ideas of this community. And so please, hold a public hearing, or sorry, implement the ordinance as is. So we will have public hearings, like Ken mentioned, for any kind of other development. Change it from an allowed use to a conditional use. And as Greg said in the paper the other day, it could still become a fire department. But we need more public hearing for what the needs, or more public input on what the needs of the police station are. We shouldn't be paying bills for any kind of space analysis for the 9R building without any commitment that it's actually a good idea for police and fire to partner up. And that's concerning, that we know that's occurred. You have letters from BID, Business Improvement District Board of Directors, and Local First, and they represent hundreds of businesses that want to see this ordinance implemented, as well as the businesses that have written you as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you for your participation. Do we have any virtual comments?
There's a second place.
You're not.
How could I forget that? Mr. Greg Hope.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Greg Hope, 862 Main Avenue. How and why did we get here? In 2014, the city and the fire district agreed in the fire services contract that the parties shall select a site appropriate to the parties for a downtown fire station. This contract provision of an appropriate site review never happened, because the fire district chose to keep the city in the dark. This was a critical step that has never, that was never completed and remains unaddressed even to this time. By early fall, we, your citizens, began calling for a public forum, an open discussion involving communication, questions, dialogue, and debate. Despite numerous pleas for this forum, they went unanswered and unaddressed. Instead, instead, whoops, in mid, instead, in mid-December, 9R hurriedly threw together what they called a public forum, impelled by their imminent sale of their property to fire. This faux forum was a Zoom meeting where the questions were pre-selected, the answers predetermined, and no public comment was allowed. Throughout the winter, we citizens continued to press for a public forum and a discussion of the appropriateness of the selected site to accommodate a new fire station. Spring arrived, and on the March 10th, sorry, a cursor that's too fast for me here. On March 10th, there was another fake forum where the questions were predetermined, the answers were pre-selected, and no public comment was allowed. Within two days, we decided to do an initiative. Within two weeks, we had our initiative ordinance drafted. 29 petition circulation or circulators volunteered, and we began circulating petitions on March 29th. Thirty days later, we had gathered 1,118 signatures, approximately 22% of the Durango electorate in the city's last election. We asked that you, this evening, set a date to adopt our ordinance, which, again, says the city shall hold public hearings to determine the appropriateness of the proposed land use upon which to locate a central downtown fire station. We took the initiative to close this circle, which was opened up last summer. We asked that you recognize the legitimacy of our process and to finally allow us to hear our voice, for you to hear our voice, in this process. So we think, and we recommend, and we ask, that you adopt this ordinance and not go to a citizens' vote at $50,000 plus. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Shaw.
Hi, my name's Charles Shaw. I live at 1309 East Third Avenue. There are so many amazing comments here that I actually don't have that much to add on, on that topic, except I just want to encourage you to adopt this thing, and if possible, tonight. I think it would just be just a bold, really good thing to do, and hopefully we can get that done, because it is very clear from, I was a petitioner as well, and just so many people were in favor of this, so we could have a public process. So I want to encourage you to do that and lend my support to that. And then, since I'm up here, I also want to encourage you to not move the fire, the police station in with the fire department there, however this thing goes. I just, for many reasons, but one, it, just don't underestimate what it takes to maintain a 110-year-old building. I mean, if, if the roof's leaking on this building here, this 110-year-old building has 300 historic windows that need paint every year. It has a complicated roof. It has so many maintenance issues that it just doesn't seem appropriate for the city to take that on. So I know Hal was very optimistic about the price on, on this remodel, but I think you'd be getting into something that would end up being a lot more expensive for the city. And I think it's a bad location, but just, I just want to speak to the, the dollars there on the maintenance. And then, since I have a little more time, the pickleball, I think you should build the pickleball up there. I don't, I don't actually know how to play pickleball, and I just found out that there is going to be pickleball up there. But I, and I am sympathetic to the people who bring items. I have kids, too, who, you know, go to activities. And it just seems like 70 parking spots that are mostly unused would be much better used for something like pickleball. And, and I think this, what this speaks to is that, is the lack of other ways to get around town, and that there's not adequate public transportation to get up there. And so maybe this could start that conversation of a way for the citizens to get up to these games without everyone having to drive. And I think, you know, if, if Durango's going to be an example, moving forward with climate and a progressive city, we're going to have to solve these problems now. And we can't keep continuing to build parking spots so that everyone can park close, even though some people, maybe there's a way to designate some for people that, you know, need to be closer. But to have the concert hall just across the street, which is almost always empty, too, I think that's a great use of it. So I really encourage you to go ahead and build these pickleball courts up there, or somewhere else downtown. And then also to work on a way for people to get up there without bringing their car, maybe gondola, maybe bus, something.
Thank you. We had a few people arrive late before I go to virtual. Is there anyone else that would like to, okay, please join us. If you could state your name and whether you're resident, please, at the podium.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Locke, 1323 East Second Avenue, city resident. So I was also a petitioner. I absolutely support the fire department. I think that they should have the best facility. I love the idea of the police department being in a collaborative space with the fire department. I just think that the 9R building is the worst place. And not only because I live there, I actually am very good at separating myself from situations and looking at the other side. I've looked at the other side of the fire department and how they feel. And truly, I don't think many of them think it's the best, best place in my, like, you know, if, like, what would be the ideal? Is that the ideal? Doesn't seem like it would be. We have a beautiful downtown. We are on the national lists over and over. And we have so much going for us that putting a fire department in a historic building in our downtown next to a park, which I remember, I was at the study that, a couple weeks ago, and it was brought up, that there was, like, falsified information, "Save Buckley Park." Yeah, "Save Buckley Park", because, not because it's being demolished, or it's being taken over by the fire department, but what about the kids playing there? What about the kids running across the street to run to the other side by their mom, getting something from the car, you know, like, who knows? But also, what about the music? What about the celebrations? What about the parades? Like, truly, I separate myself from being in that space of living there. Potentially, they're not going to be as loud as I think they would be. But really, is that what we want for our downtown? Like, and in addition, we all voted for you. I voted. I vote, I can say, like, I voted for you. And I have a shop right there. Multiple people from the county come in, outside of the city come in, and they say to me, "What do you think about that? That is the worst place, the worst idea for Durango." And all I say is, "I agree. Write a letter. Come to city council meetings. Like, when it is going to come to a head, I'll let you know." But there will be people that are going to rise for this. It's just not the right place. We need fire department downstairs. Where they're at is awesome.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we have a virtual commenter. Holly Johnson.
Holly, you've been allowed to speak. If you could unmute yourself, you will have three minutes on the clock.
Very good. Thank you. I heard at a, Holly Johnson, I live at 1215 East Third Avenue. I am a city resident. I heard at a previous city council meeting, the concept that the ball has really been dropped on this, that somebody really dropped the ball. And I thought they were talking about, it was spoken by a city councillor, and I thought they were talking about the fire district dropping the ball for their lack of planning, lack of working with the city and coming up with a consensus on where the best location was for a downtown fire station. And dropping the ball on the lack of planning so that it hasn't been so many years of keeping the fire personnel in such inappropriate quarters. You know, that really is a shame on all of us that we're not handling our fire district well. I was surprised to find out that what I really heard was that they were saying that the city had dropped the ball for not coming up with a workable solution to work with the fire district for finding a location for the downtown fire station. And that they recognized how important this was to work together and to do what was best for the citizenry of Durango. What I'm asking you guys tonight is to please pick up that ball and work with your citizens and with the fire district to figure out what the best location is, to, to plan on a good location for the fire district, for the fire station in downtown Durango. What I'm asking you guys to do tonight is to pick up the ball and adopt the ordinance that has been requested by your citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tom?
No one else online.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all for your comments. And with that, I think we're going to move on to proclamations. We have two proclamations tonight. And I will start with the Dark Sky Week proclamation. Do we have someone who will be joining us to accept that? Ben?
I see Joe Lewandowski part of that.
Yes, Betty Maya Foot.
No, I'm still got you.
All right. Well, the first one is for International Dark Sky Week, April 22nd through 30th of 2022. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder over natural night sky is a shared heritage of all humankind. And whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe and encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people and out-of-area visitors within Durango. And whereas Colorado currently has 10 certified international dark sky parks and five international dark sky communities, some of the most at any state level in the world. And whereas astrotourism within Durango and Colorado brings significant economic benefit to surrounding communities. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established, has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences, which result in significant impacts to the ecology and health of all communities. And whereas 80% of the world's population, including many people in Colorado, live under a dome of light pollution, excessive artificial lighting at night that disrupts natural darkness and may never experience the visual wonder or ecology and health benefits of living underneath the dark sky. And whereas International Dark Sky Association headquartered in Tucson, Arizona, is the globally recognized authority on light pollution and has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage the protection of and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now, therefore, I, Melissa Youssef, Mayor Pro Tem of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 22nd to 30th, 2022, as International Dark Sky Week. Would you guys like to say something? Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, if we could just have five minutes here, I think we were told we could do that. I'm Joe Lewandowski, former member of the Planning Commission. And usually, everybody got up and left the meeting when something came up that I was involved with. But that being said, I just wanted to say that the Dark Sky ordinance is something that few communities in the United States have. And we're lucky to have one. Mr. Hope, who was here earlier, led that, was one of the leaders of that effort in 2000. And most people don't know that we have this, which is probably a good thing in some ways. But I want to make sure that we're reminded of that. My take is that dark, dark sky ordinance is, is kind of like pornography. You can't really describe it, but when you see it, you really know what it looks like. When, when my brother visits from North Carolina, he always marvels when he walks into my driveway and looks up and can see stars because that's not something he can do at his house in North, in North Carolina. I just want to make sure that the council knows that the city staff implements the dark sky ordinance, and we'd like to strengthen it eventually. And just to remind everybody when they go outside that we have good dark skies in Durango. And I'd like to introduce Betty Maya Foot, who is, who works, who lives in Durango and works for the International Dark Sky Association and works all over the country and the world. And she's going to say a few words. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Betty Maya Foot. I'm the Director of Engagement for the International Dark Sky Association and a recent transplant to Durango. I grew up in Moab, so not too far away. But I just want to say thank you so much for proclaiming Dark Sky Week a few weeks after Dark Sky Week, but it still is really helpful to us. There were 22 proclamations all across the country this year, one in Alamosa as well. And Governor Polis actually proclaimed April as Lights Out for Birds Month. So, there's a lot of momentum in Colorado around dark sky conservation and celebration of the night sky. A bill actually just passed in Colorado that will provide $35,000 to International Dark Sky Place applications. So, I'd just like to throw the idea out there that Durango could possibly become an international dark sky community. There's five in the, in the state already, and we're right down the road from Mesa Verde, which is one of the top-tier international dark sky parks in the world. And as I mentioned, astrotourism is a huge booming segment of the ecotourism sector. And a study done by Missouri State University researchers shows that astrotourism will bring over $5 billion to Colorado Plateau economies over a 10-year period and over 50,000 jobs. So, it's a really cool thing to support, and we want to protect the environment, but we tend to forget that the nighttime environment is just as important to protect. So, I want to say thank you and encourage you to continue to implement the dark sky ordinance and improve it if possible.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next proclamation is Durango Buddy Poppy Days, May 25th through May 30th, 2022. Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and areas' children's programs such as Bicycle Safety Week and school and scholarship programs. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies of the Veterans of Foreign Affairs is eloquently referred to, referred in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, I, Melissa Youssef, Mayor Pro Tem of Durango, Colorado, do proclaim May 25th through May 30th, 2022, as Durango Poppy Days. And I do hereby urge the citizens of the community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support, by the obtaining of Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored veterans. The officers and members of VFW Post 4031 urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this community who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Thank you. And I don't think there's anyone here to accept this one. Okay, so we'll leave it with you. All right. Okay, moving on to section 6.3, City Operational Updates. 6.3.1 with Devin Schmidt, Sales Tax Revenue Forecast Project Partnership with Fort Lewis College.
Good evening. I'm Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. Give me one second while I pull up my presentation and share that with our folks on Zoom. Excellent, so this is a city operational update. Wanted to provide counsel with the opportunity to hear about our sales tax revenue forecast project. And we also have some of the folks that were from Fort Lewis College here with us this evening. So, wanted to bring them up and thank them for the opportunity and the partnership. So, just to tell you a little bit about the project, we worked with eight groups in an applied economics class. We provided them with five models that were 10-year forecasts. And we asked the students to consider, what are the micro and macro in factors affecting local sales tax? Is 2022 an indication of the new normal? And which forecast model would be best in predicting future forecast revenues based on the current environment? As well as, is there any changes that can be made to your preferred model? So, while all the groups had some great analysis and provided some excellent feedback, there were two groups that really stood out. Some identifications from the eight teams were, so some of those micro and macro economic factors were, you know, what was the travel to and from Durango during the pandemic? How are remote workers affecting that local sales tax by moving to the area? Heading towards a recession? Housing, inflation, tourism advertising, gas prices, supply chain costs to build with lumber and concrete rising? Just the local events in Durango and those impacts? Flight prices, unemployment, consumption and savings at the local level? GDP, weather, Ukraine, the war in Ukraine? And then, the legalization of marijuana in neighboring states? How is that going to affect some of those tourism that comes over for that particular item? And so, we were really impressed with the level and thought that the students had put forward. The other question that we thought was really pressing was, is 2021 an indication of the new normal? So, a lot of what came back was not necessarily. We don't think we're ever going to necessarily go back to pre-2020. However, it's, it's, it was a really interesting, great project. So, the results, so Group One, they utilized one of our models that looked at a weighted average. But they did something unique in that model. And what they did is they added in the change in last year's family home as a percent in the weighted model, and then change in the median home price. So, they added that in there as a factor to say, how is this affecting sales tax? The results were a bit more aggressive and so very optimistic, excuse me. And so, with their thought processes with how unpredictable inflation is, the adjusted model provides a better scenario than the other model because the other model, they felt, was not designed to capture such high inflation. We picked this group because of the level of analysis they went through and the detail that they gave us in, in the 10-year forecast. The second group was the model that we were discussing a bit at the study session earlier this afternoon. This is using more of a regression model. One of the things we actually learned from the students was this Gretel model, which is a statistical tool that we can utilize to project out years looking at different variations around unemployment and CPI. And so, that was a great model for us to look at and utilize as well. And then, how did this project help the city? So, the two models, taking both the micro and the macro environment, forecasting the sales tax. It gave us the opportunity to use both models or find the difference between the two, depending on what we're seeing in the economy. And then, just some really new ideas and thoughts around our local economy. We're certainly very excited to see how some of these models come to fruition towards the end of 2022 and see how it all unfolds. And at this time, I would really like to say thank you to the students at Fort Lewis College and invite Dr. Nathan Peach up. And I believe we also have Ben and Bobby here as well. If you guys would like to come join us, that'd be great. And certainly want to give you the opportunity to share. If there's anything you guys want to share, but mostly just want to say thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm Nate Peach, Dr. Nate Peach, I guess. I'm the professor of the class that the project took place in. And I just want to thank Devin and our team. I know that, I can only imagine how busy you are and to take the effort to go and reach out. I really appreciate it. As a professor, this is like a dream to get a live project where the city's finances are on the line and push students. It was fantastic. And for the students, it was at this moment in the semester where you're kind of done. You're kind of tired. And Devin came knocking and was like, too bad, we got it, we got to do this. And so, they did great. They did really, really good work. I was very impressed by everybody, but especially Ben and Bobby's groups did some really great stuff. And unfortunately, I can't resist an attempt at a joke. Forecasting is not like pornography. You don't know it. It's the point. You don't know what's going to happen. And in the environment that we're in, they did a great job trying to figure out what the heck is going on.
That was good. Do you guys want to say anything?
Yeah, so as a, as a student, you really don't get many opportunities to work in a applied setting. You kind of just get lost in books and studying. And I just want to say thank you to the city and thank you to Devin for reaching out and letting us have this opportunity.
Absolutely. And just on behalf of the city organization, thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to be able to use the resource of Fort Lewis College to be able to help us. And when we look at our forecasting models and budgeting, that'll definitely be something we use for this year and years, in the years next, as we continue to move on. And we'll definitely keep you in touch with whatever other forecasting models we may need. So, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jose. Okay, and thank you to Devin as well. Thank you, it was wonderful. La Posta Area and Three Springs Update with Scott Shine.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council. Scott Shine, Assistant Director for Community Development. Thanks for having us for a little bit to give an update on what we're framing as our strategic expansion areas. And this has come out of sort of a realization that, you know, as fortunate as we are to live in Durango and experience such a high quality of life and a beautiful mountain setting and, you know, academic community, engaged citizenry, and all of these things that we get to enjoy, we are facing some pretty pressing issues. And we want to try to get out ahead of those by being strategic and being thoughtful in how we address some of the issues we're facing. And so, in community development and in partnership with, with other departments of the city and with other partners in the community, we've, we've thought about what are those strategic opportunities that we have to expand and meet the needs of our future for our community? Everything from housing to job growth, expansion of employers, and as you can see in Durango Mesa, cultural or recreational facilities. So, these are areas right in close proximity to the city. Some just on the outside of the city limits, others already annexed and close to city infrastructure. They just need sort of a focused and attentive approach to help them realize their full potential. So, that's what we've identified now. There are, there is a possibility that there could be others that, that come up. But I'm going to talk primarily tonight about La Posta and Three Springs Village, too. You've all been involved in these conversations and given us some direction up to this point. It's been, you know, six or eight weeks since we It's been, you know, six or eight weeks since we last checked in with you. So we thought it was a good time to come share what we've been doing, how we've been engaging with the property owners in these areas and what we need from council as far as next steps. So I'll go over the update and then happy to respond to any questions or clarifications. So these are some of the thoughts that helped to shape that idea of a strategic expansion area and what really helped us hone in on La Posta and Three Springs and also include Durango Mesa. And really that underlying issue of we're growing, we have new population, new demands on our services. And really what's causing, the fundamental issue that's causing a lot of this is lack of developable land with city services that can be enhanced and developed to meet the potential as far as, you know, housing, commercial opportunities, transportation networks, those types of things. So that was a realization that helped us to say, okay, we have to step up, start to look at how do we provide infrastructure and services to these areas? As I mentioned, some of them are just outside city limits. And so we talked with our colleagues at the county and we said, as these areas become more urban, become more mixed use, there's more population there, they need parks, they need bus routes, they need these types of things. The city is really best equipped to go out and to lead the development of these areas and help to shape it. So that's guiding us to look at annexation primarily of Durango Mesa and La Posta so that it comes under the city's jurisdiction and we have oversight in shaping the future of those areas. Thinking about how are we anticipating and getting out of the issues that we're facing and being proactive instead of just reacting to whatever developer comes in the door? For example, La Posta, we're dealing with, you know, two dozen property owners. And they're not necessarily beating down our door saying, we want to annex. But we're going out, helping them to organize, helping them to see the benefits of annexation, getting city services, helping to mitigate, you know, potential conflict with neighboring property owners so that we can come to a greater solution. So that sort of proactive forethought and thoughtful planning is really underlying these efforts. Public-private partnerships is a key component of a lot of the work we're doing right now. And then lastly, the idea of incremental and adaptive development. If you think about going from a vacant piece of land to a fully developed city lot, there's a lot of dollars that it takes to get there. And sometimes it's better to do that in small steps and be more nimble and flexible as we reach that ultimate goal of a fully built-out development. So I just wanted you to be aware of these principles, how we're being strategic, how we're being thoughtful. We're not just saying, let's grow, let's expand, let's sprawl. That's not the idea. The idea is thoughtful, staged and sequential development to preserve our quality of life and also meet the needs as we grow. So La Posta, you all have been, you know, familiar with this area. Everybody I talked to said, yeah, La Posta has been on the radar for a long time. Everybody realizes this is an area where we need to grow into, where we have a great opportunity along the river, just south of our existing city limits, already serviced by water. We spent $2 million probably about eight or nine years ago now to extend, begin extending water down there. And we really want to take that to the next stage. So that is, like I mentioned, leading us to propose annexation of a sort of a first phase of the La Posta area. It's a little over 300 acres, a little over two dozen property owners. We've been out meeting with all of them in a variety of settings, one-on-one meetings, to understand what their desires are, as well as group meetings to talk about coordination of roads and different types of land uses and things. And everything is moving ahead very well. There's a lot of excitement and momentum behind this idea. And now what we have to move into is the logistics of getting those services so that that land can develop to its best, highest and best use. So we're looking at ways alongside the public process of making sure the use designations are accurate and provide for the opportunities we want to present. We're looking at ways that we can invest and use public dollars to extend infrastructure, that mainline infrastructure to the area. And that's really the biggest kind of takeaway from tonight that I want to leave you with. Among these five different components of sort of the La Posta initiative, we really need to get started on designing infrastructure connections to tie this area into the city network of water, transportation, and although it's not city-served sewer through the South Durango Sanitation District. This is how we're, this is the simplest way I can represent sort of the sequence of events that we're working on. We've been updating that land use map and getting buy-in from all the property owners. We're now moving into talking about the sort of statutorily required annexation procedures. We're working with the property owners and the city attorney to work through all of those steps. As far as public infrastructure investment, we have, we want to build on an existing partnership that we have with the Economic Development Alliance and use them as sort of a project manager and realize some of the efficiencies and the benefits of having them as a core partner and facilitating the conversation among South Durango Sanitation, the city, the county, and other stakeholders, all with the goal of leading up to, you know, private development that then contributes towards urban renewal financing and helps us pay back some of those initial costs for the infrastructure. So four next steps for you to be aware of. As far as La Posta, we are holding sort of a more area-wide meeting in the middle of June. We've been focused on conversations with the affected property owners and we want to broaden that. We want to hear if there are concerns from neighbors. We want to make sure they're informed as to the direction this is going. We want to move forward with the release of a request for proposals to start designing. It's about two miles of roadway from the intersection of the highway down to the southern portion of the La Posta area for that La Posta road. A lot of development that has come forward already has made us realize that that transportation network is substandard and it won't accommodate any more development than what's down there. A couple of intersections are failing. There's not the capacity needed. So we need to understand on build-out, what are we looking at as far as traffic volumes? And then start to propose some solutions for intersections and the roadway. We want to work with the alliance to come, it's kind of an amendment to a previous memorandum of understanding that we had with them to design a sewer master plan for the area. We want to take that to the next stage and get some actual engineered design plans to allow this section of the community to tie into South Durango, the treatment facility just across the river. But it's a little bit of a complex situation to get across the river, have some pump stations to pump the sewage to be treated. So we definitely need professional engineering assistance to design that and get that ready to go. The other big question is how that sewer system will be governed and maintained. There's a couple of different options. We have some ideas about what our preferred alternative would be, but we want to get some objective review and some fiscal analysis of what that would mean to the city and to the sanitation district. So we plan to move forward with those pieces. And once we have proposals in and we have a better sense of the cost for that, we will be coming back to council for an additional appropriation. We think it's a good fit for the ARPA funds that we've received from the federal government. We've been in conversations with Devin and her team and Cynthia and Jared about how that could work. And we'd like to come back in June. We estimate it'll be around $600,000 for all of that design work. And we'll have plans that we're ready to deploy, shovel-ready, and able to pursue grant funding and other funding sources to build that infrastructure and really open up the potential for La Posta. So that's the summary of the La Posta area. I appreciate your support thus far. It is one of those things that is exciting because there is broad-based support. There's a lot of people who are really excited about the momentum even that's starting to be generated that have maybe been a little cynical in the past about moving this forward. So it's an exciting project to be working on. It's going to take a lot of different city departments, leadership from council, from other organizations to help us continue moving forward. But we think it's going in the right direction. So that's La Posta. I can answer questions now or keep going to Three Springs.
I'm glad to see that we're cutting it up a little bit so we can proceed with different parts. And I think I mentioned it last time. I'm glad we're going that route. The funds are not always going to stay around. So you mentioned the road. Is the road part of this or is that a complete separate line item?
It's part of that total amount. Yeah, water, main extension, sewer crossing and some sewer main extensions. And then it won't be full construction plans for the road. That's good clarification. That's just the beginning of about 30% plans for the road. And then we can hone in on where are the choke points on the road that we really need to focus on to provide more capacity.
I'm very happy to see that because there's many steps to make. Keep making a step. We'll get there. Thank you.
One little step at a time. Three Springs is a bit quicker, so I'll hit on that. You all, again, have been familiar in the Village 2 discussions. We've decided to engage with them on renegotiating the terms of the development agreement for Three Springs in order to find ways to lessen the barriers that they're facing to move into Village 2. Village 2 is about 270 acres, or no, 370 acres. It's currently entitled for 1,300 housing units. So it's already annexed. It has entitlements. They're just saying, we can't get there based on our cost estimates for the infrastructure and some of the other components of the development agreement. So we want to open that back up now that the world has changed a lot since 2006, 2007, reevaluate that development agreement alongside looking for ways to participate in some of the infrastructure extensions. So after those initial conversations we have with council about different ways to get there, we've been meeting with GRVP, who's the owner of the property, every other week for the past, you know, four months. And we've come to a place where we have a draft cost share agreement to engage what, it's a little bit of a tough thing to define, but it's almost a mediator or a land use kind of attorney or consultant that will help us to open up that development agreement and talk to both sides and say, okay, here's what each side is sort of willing to compromise on. Here are the key things that they need some movement on to make it more feasible. And then we'll bring that to you for approval as it was initially approved by council. So we have those funds appropriated through the Housing Innovation Fund. So we don't need to come back for another appropriation. We want to use those funds that we have available, enter into this agreement with GRVP where we're splitting the cost of that and move forward with updating that development agreement. Alongside that, similar to La Posta, we want to continue to seek funding options for Wilson Gold's Drive. That's really the key piece to get that infrastructure up to Village 2 and open that up for development. That's what they've indicated is the key barrier. So we'll continue to do that with our finance team and grants to look for money to do that. Talk to Parks and Rec about pickleball alternatives maybe and see if there's opportunities to kind of synchronize efforts and get a road extended. 9R is also a player on Three Springs because there's a commitment for them to dedicate some land to 9R. So they're involved in some of these conversations. But again, just wanted you to know that just because you haven't heard from us in a couple of months doesn't mean there hasn't been anything going on. A lot of effort has been put in and we're kind of hitting that tipping point of when we're going to start to identify real changes to this agreement that'll help move it forward. So that's all I have on that update. Thank you for your time.
Hold on just a second. On the Three Springs, I mean, that's another huge potential for additional housing in whatever shape or form they come. Is there discussion also on doing many phases in that large property to ease the burden and just pay-as-you-go kind of development?
Yeah.
In blocks of whatever, 50 units or 100 units?
Yeah. Yeah, that idea of sort of incrementally moving into it is something that Three Springs has brought up a lot about how can we break this down into smaller chunks? Just because of the absorption of housing units, because of our capacity of builders locally, they can't go out there and build 500 units next year. We don't have that capacity. So that's a big part of that discussion is how do they break it up into smaller chunks? And even if you can see on this map, this is the gravel road that gets you back to spurline trails and then continues on north into that Village 2. There may be opportunities to look at some land adjacent to this roadway that wasn't previously contemplated for development, but could provide sort of a near-term opportunity instead of waiting until we get all the way up into Village 2.
Very good. Timeline-wise, is this going to be faster or slower than La Posta?
That's a good question. We want to get the development agreement to you this fall. So that, you know, that's the legal structure that then gives them the opportunity to start planning and expending dollars. As far as construction, you can see it on a similar timeline.
Because the ARPA funds, would they be possible to be used for the road on this one as well?
That's a possibility. I know infrastructure is a qualified expense.
Thank you.
Did you want to introduce the newest staff member?
That's a great idea.
But while you're up here, no problem.
If Daniel Murray would come up for just a minute, we're really excited to have a new member of our team. Daniel started about 10 days ago and he is the city's new Development Services Manager. And I'll let him introduce himself.
Thank you. Daniel Murray, been in Durango for about 10 years with the county that entire time. So I'm familiar with all these joint planning, future growth areas, and I'm happy to be with the city.
Well, welcome. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Scott, thank you so much for the presentation and the overview and the focus on these strategic areas systematically with our partners. So thank you. I really appreciate the update and keeping us informed. Counselors, does anyone else have questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you again. Okay, we're moving on to review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under agenda number, I believe it's nine. But it might be 10 in this case. Nine. Okay. Counselors, do we have anyone that would like to remove an agenda? Oh, yes, please. Thank you. Ben, will you please read these for us?
Thank you, yes. Item 7.1 through 7.7 are approval of minutes items. 7.1 is for the City Council Board of County Commissioners meeting from April 28, 2022. 7.2 is the City Council Special Study Session on April 29, 2022. 7.3 is for the City Council's Special Study Session on May 2, 2022. 7.4 is for the City Council's Special Meeting on May 2, 2022. 7.5 is for the Durango City Council and Durango Fire Protection District Joint Study Session on May 3, 2022. 7.6 is for the City Council Study Session on May 3, 2022. And 7.7 is for the City Council Regular Meeting on May 23, 2022. Items 7.8 through 7.13 are discussion and possible action items. 7.8 is concerning a resolution to amend the 2022 budget. 7.9 is concerning a replat of revised College Drive condominiums, unit number two. 7.10 is regarding an implied consent agreement for 1999 County Road 240. 7.11 is concerning an emergency ordinance delegating authority to the city manager to impose fire restrictions. 7.12 concerns a resolution acknowledging completion and acceptance of the Santa Rita Water Resource Facility Reclamation Facility Construction Project. Thank you. And lastly, 7.13 is for the approval of a resolution authorizing an appropriation from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for the Active People Healthy Colorado Grant that will close by September 29, 2022.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Counselor, that would like to remove an item?
Yes, I do. And I also wanted to comment that those minutes are from May 3, not 23rd, just for the public to know that. Yes, I do. And I also wanted to comment that those minutes are from May third, not twenty third, just for the public to know that.
Okay.
I don't, I'd like to remove item seven point twelve, please.
Any other counselor? Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the items excluding item seven point twelve?
So moved.
All second. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes. Counselor Baxter?
Thank you. So seven point one two is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution acknowledging completion and acceptance of the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility Construction Project. I had a couple of questions, and and one of them actually dovetails with a public comment on this. So I'm very excited that we're closing this project. I'm sure you are too, Jared. You've been through a lot with this, and it's completed, which is wonderful. There will be a approximately two point three million dollar recession of bond financing. I'm guessing what that means is that because we haven't pulled it, it'll just go back to whatever agency issued it for us, and then we won't be making loan payments on it.
Counselor Baxter, that is accurate. We are rescinding those dollars back to pretty much the Colorado Water and Power Authority who loaned us the whole bottle of wax.
Okay. The other question I had is that we're getting a principal refund of three hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. I'm guessing that's based on the fact that we're not using the whole bond. And I'm wondering what the plans are for that. How, where will that go? Well, where will that end up?
So those principal payments were paid out of sewer revenue, so they would be redeposited in the sewer fund and then used for sewer projects that would be coming up in the future or could be used for operations if that was the prerogative. So.
So one of the comments that I just got recently is that, and I don't know if the old Chamber of Commerce building was removed because of this project or just as an ancillary issue there. But with the new children's playground, it's just further south there. Getting kids up to the restrooms in the sewer building is really challenging. And I'm wondering if these funds could be used to help facilitate a little bit more convenient bathroom facility for youngsters.
That'll be definitely something I could talk with Turi about, talk with Allison about what those priorities are. Might be a little unorthodox to technically pay for a bathroom out of the sewer fund, but.
Well, not if you were responsible for destroying the bathroom. So I didn't, I don't know that you were, but just just putting that out there. And then the other thing that people have mentioned is it's not really obvious that there are bathrooms in that administration building. When you're going up and down the river trail and when you're when you're coming in from kind of southeast of the building, I know we have all those paper signs in the window, but I'm thinking maybe we could do a better job of signage for that. Because it's really critical for people, and we don't want them using our landscaping or the river to do that kind of thing. So I would, I think that would be a great idea.
Noted. Supplemental signage could definitely be done, probably.
Excellent. Thank you.
On the bathroom, I just want to make sure is council okay with us taking a look at that option?
I'm wondering, because I'm just thinking back on the history, if I remember correct, the old Welcome Center was bought by the through the sewer fund, I guess, and then used for three years, was four hundred thousand, I think, purchase price, used for three years. Then we demolished it for a hundred and twenty. And is that the bathroom we're going to replace? Is the bathroom that was replaced part of the sewer bill, the sewer administration building? Or we're going to, it seems a bit unfair to use that sewer fund for that purpose versus the parks and rec space, or parks and rec fund, whichever one applies.
So one of the reasons why I asked about this is because the sewer fund and Parks and Rec have worked together to fund several of those projects down in that area. So it seems like a logical extension of that partnership to be able to do that same type of thing.
Might be a stretch, but.
If, I mean, I think from looking at it, it's something that we can look at and research. You would obviously come back to council. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't go off researching and just make sure everyone was or the majority of the council was okay with us taking a look at it and bringing it back if we're able to make that possible, if that is a possibility.
I support you looking into it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jared. So I would make a motion to approve item seven point twelve.
All second. Any further discussion? Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes. Wonderful. Moving on to public hearings, the City Council previously directed staff to publish notice of public hearings for each of the hearings listed below. This is dealt with in this section of the agenda are of a legislative or policy related nature. Ten point one is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Three Springs Codes and Standards. We have a staff report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Members of the council, good evening. Dan Armatano with the Community Development Department. I think this is a pretty simple proposal to amend the Three Springs Codes and Standards, so I'll just jump right into it. These amendments are focused on section three point two, which is the parking requirements of the Three Springs Codes and Standards, which is the essentially the land use regulatory document for all development in Three Springs. It's administered jointly by the city and the Three Springs DRC, that's Design Review Committee. The changes will align the Three Springs Parking Standards with recent LEDC updates were completed in early spring of twenty twenty one, so about a year ago. The proposed changes have been vetted and approved by the Three Springs DRC. And just on process, amendments must be crafted and adopted in accordance with normal City of Durango procedures essentially for text amendments. So that's why we have a public hearing tonight and an ordinance for this. Just to summarize the amendments, again, we're aligning the parking standards to be consistent with the new LEDC requirements. These are applying to all residential uses. There's a minor exception for two bedroom townhomes, which really applies to circumstance where there's minimal on-street parking available for for new townhomes, in which case there may be two parking spaces required at the discretion of the DRC. Office and medical office standards are being updated, and we're also requiring electric vehicle parking for new development out there. There's also just some clarification to the language for the shared parking zone, which is shown here on the map on the right for Three Springs, and that's kind of focused on their urban core out there. Currently, the standards allow for parking in city right-of-way with new development, and we're just changing that to say that's at the discretion of the DRC and and the city. Here's the parking table for Three Springs. I don't know if anybody has looked at the LEDC parking tables, but they're much more extensive than this. So these changes are really pretty simple, again, focused on residential requirements and office requirements. I'm happy to take questions on this if we need to at the end of this presentation. As far as alignment with adopted plans, the twenty twenty one strategic plan specifically directed staff to align the LEDC specific to parking requirements to offer construction of more housing units. That's been completed, so we're just extending that now to Three Springs. The housing plan includes a very similar recommended action item. And the comprehensive plan very broadly just anticipates code amendments as growth and market conditions change. Planning Commissioner reviewed this back on April twenty fifth and had a unanimous recommendation of approval. There were no public comments provided either in writing or in that planning commission hearing. And I have a recommended motion on screen, which is the same as what you have in your packet, so I can take any questions.
Wonderful. I'll start by opening the public hearing. Do we have any individuals who would like to participate? No one for Three Springs? No one virtually?
No one virtually.
Tom confirming there's no one virtually?
Yeah, there's no one virtually.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion, questions, comments?
I can make a motion straight away if you want.
Great.
I move to adopt the proposed text amendments to the Three Springs Codes and standards with the findings established in the April twenty fifth, twenty twenty two Planning Commission Minutes and staff report and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting and ordinance ordinance adopting these amendments and incorporate them for a first reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
All second. Any further discussion? Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes. Wonderful. Moving on to item ten point two point one, a public hearing for the South Fork Conceptual Development Plan and Durango Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendments. Mr. Williams?
Right, got it that time. Thank you, Mark Williams, Community Development Department. As you said, this is a hearing to review some proposed changes to the South Fork area. So we're looking at changing technically the conceptual plan and the future land use map. And so both of those documents need to be changed in order to achieve what the proposals are out there for development. That includes changing the northeast portion of the property from mixed use to high density residential, changing the street cross-section of the future Ewing Mesa Drive, and then amending the plan text to reflect those changes. And just as a little background, the South Fork Master Plan is actually many things. It's a character district plan. It also serves as a conceptual development plan for the South Fork PD. And it's the PD agreement as well. So there's a lot packed into that document. So if you are unfamiliar with South Fork, it's immediately west of Mercy Hospital. It's a fifty-two acre parcel. And this is actually lot one of South Fork. South Fork itself is bigger. It's about a hundred and twenty acres and includes property south of Wilson Gulch Drive and then off to the west, the parcel north of Wilson Gulch Drive, which is open space. The changes that are being proposed are really to set the stage for what's to come later this year. We've had contact with quite a few developers and other entities who are interested in the South Fork area. One of those is a multifamily developer who is going to propose to build up to four hundred and eighty apartments in that northeast corner. That would be over two phases. There's a space immediately south of the apartment space, and we'll look at that map in a second, where an assisted living facility would go in. It would have space for, I think, around a hundred twenty to a hundred and fifty residents. There'd be a combination of people there in assisted living and then people in the memory care as well. The northwest corner of this property would be a new church. The city is working internally. We're having some coordinating meetings with planning, parks, transportation, engineering to set, help set the stage for this. And so one of the things we'd like to do is get a new city park out there, and we have lots of sidewalks and trails and we're working on pedestrian connections to the west and then also to Mercy Hospital to the east. We've met with Mercy, and they have a couple of representatives here who I think would probably enjoy a chance to speak about this later on about the possibility of setting aside or prioritizing some of the housing at the apartment complex for their employees. They're like everybody else. They're having a hard time finding housing for the people that they're trying to hire. So it seems like a natural fit. They're, these apartments are literally just to the west and walking distance from the hospital. And then also, Ewing Mesa Drive would extend from Wilson Gulch all the way to the north end of the property. It could one day extend into Durango Mesa. That's a long time in the future, but the applicant, the applicants will be responsible for building that. And I just want to point out that the importance of the apartments to that, that's a that's a big ticket item. There's a lot of expensive infrastructure costs out there, and having the apartments with the mass that they have really creates an economy of scale that allows the private sector to build these infrastructure facilities that wouldn't happen ordinarily. The South Fork Plan, just a few slides of background, was approved in twenty sixteen. And the lot that we're talking about is lot one, right here in the middle. The red color is commercial, so you can see that originally the northeast portion and the north central or the east central portion were intended for commercial use. And then that blue is institutional, so that's for the church. And then this is medium density residential. There was a range of possibilities that were examined when this plan was being adopted, and there were several public meetings. So you can see this is one concept plan that did not get adopted. They had the church at the far north end and then residential areas. Can't remember what it is behind the Zoom box, and then big box commercial along Wilson Gulch Drive. So the footprints and the sizes of the buildings that are out here have always been intended to be pretty big footprints. It's not recreating downtown Durango. It's more of a we don't want to say auto oriented because we're going to have a lot of pedestrian connections and parks and walkability. But still, it's, you know, it's greenfield development. This was another of the options that was examined, having residential on the north side, then the church. This just over here is an entertainment district that did not happen, and then with the big box commercial again. And then while I'm going through this, I think I'll just bring up that when Ewing Mesa gets built and the apartments would go in over here and then the assisted living over here, this opens up the possibility for some of these property owners just west of South Fork who are interested in building more or selling their land for more residential development, that those are super preliminary ideas. But if this project happens, then that becomes feasible. This is what ended up getting adopted with the church in the northwest corner. That's still the case. Then the commercial uses along Wilson Gulch Road or Wilson Gulch Drive is actually the name. This is still going to be ten acres as a commercial use. The car dealership is planning to go in there. This eight acres is changing from mixed use and half of it will be commercial regional, which is a better land use designation for a car dealership. And then the other half or other portion of it will be for the church. And this road, the spine road, is actually not going right through the middle. It's going off center to the west. So this is actually a twenty acre parcel over here. And then there's one more parcel that is unspoken for at this time. The developers are trying to find a use to go in there. They'd love to have a use that could be available to the future apartment residents. So a restaurant would be great, and maybe that's something that could happen. But we'll see. If you read the minutes from the planning commission meeting, one of the the representatives from the applicants read a long list of businesses that they've tried to lure into the area. They've had a tough time getting businesses up there. And so that's one of the reasons, or you know, maybe the the main reason that staff is is behind switching this mixed use area to residential is since two thousand sixteen, things have changed. Housing has become a much more it was important then, that's critical now. And so the opportunity to get that many housing units is something that we feel we should act on. As I mentioned before, there's a lot of pedestrian connections. One of the things they're talking about is adding a new trail to get over to the west side, so that would be for hikers or mountain bikers. There's already a ten-foot trail, multi-use trail on the south side of Wilson Gulch Drive. The Animus River Trail comes up here. At this point, it's the Smart One sixty trail. And then there's a trail also over here. And then, as I said, we're talking with the apartment developers, their name is BLD, in Mercy to have some pedestrian connections into Mercy because just a few minutes away and just in the upper right-hand corner of the screen is the Commercial Center for Three Springs. And so whether the people who live here could walk down to this red commercial space to a restaurant or whether they can walk over here to the commercial uses in Three Springs, they're both good options, and we'd like to enable those. And the red on here are commercial uses that could end up being more neighborhood serving. So a restaurant, hopefully. This is the future grocery store and then potentially a restaurant could go in that parcel on the left hand side. This might be a little bit hard to read. This is a proposed cross section. So I, I took a portion of it just on the bottom. So it might be a little bit easier to read. The original plan for Ewing Mesa Drive was for a hundred and two foot right of way width. It's a minor arterial. So the city wanted to reserve the right to widen to four lanes at some point in the future, if it becomes necessary. We don't think it's necessary right now. So they're proposing two lane road. These are the two lanes with a center median, bike lanes on both sides, and then eight foot sidewalks as well as tree lawns and landscaping. This is one of the things that needs to be changed in the South Fork Master Plan. If this application is approved, the master developer would return with a subdivision that would show where the parcels are going to be, where the road layout is and width is going to be, where the infrastructure is going to go. These are all things that we're discussing offline right now. And then if subdivision is approved, the individual developers would come back and probably not before August, maybe September, to look at their individual site plans for each of those projects. And as I said before, a lot of the city agencies are working together because we think this could be a really good project because it's, there's nothing there. It's a blank slate. So we want to make sure we're coordinated between everyone to do the best job that we can. This definitely complies with the city's housing goals to provide more housing. This would be by far the biggest single housing development in Durango, and they would be apartment rentals, by the way. These are the relevant LUDC criteria. The city hosted a public meeting on March the thirtieth for the area residents attended. Those residents mostly lived north of this area. The applicant, or yeah, the applicants also held a public meeting at Toyota Motor Company, and a few of the residents were there as well. And their comments were included in the staff report. So this actually requires two approval motions. One would be to approve the South Fork Conceptual Development Plan Amendment. And then the second motion would be to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So that's what I have, and I'd be happy to answer your questions for you.
Thank you so much. Before I open up the public hearing with the applicant or developer, like to make any comments or presentations? No? Okay. I'll open up the public hearing. Thank you. Looks like we have a couple of comments. David Solomon, please. If you could come up to the podium, name and if you're a resident of the city.
Yeah, thank you. And Mark, is there any way I can just flip? Okay, perfect. I was just going to flip to that. Just a little bit. Okay. Good evening. My name's David Solomon. My family and I are at four seventy-one Eagle Pass. I serve as the CFO at Mercy Hospital. And so in, in the few comments I'll share, it's really on, on behalf of Mercy. And I'm happy to take any questions after I share a few thoughts. First off, related both to this and just more generally in the community, for obvious reasons, Mercy is wholeheartedly in support of opportunities to create affordable and attainable housing. As, as a large employer in the community, it's something that's we struggle with as, as do many. And so I, I think we're wholeheartedly in support of opportunities to support that. The few things I wanted to share this evening, primarily for purposes of ensuring that council's making the most informed decision possible, is related to our helipad operations, which are just to the east. You can sort of see just to the, the right of what's currently shown as mixed use there. I, I would note, these, these comments are not for or against the development. Again, as much as anything for purposes of being a good neighbor, want to just make sure that council is making an informed decision on, on the impacts there. So just, just to the east, as I said, of, of where we're considering having that high density residential development is our Flight for Life Helipad. That operates twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year in order to provide the service to the community and the region that's needed. With that, I don't think it'll come as any great surprise that there's a pretty meaningful amount of noise that can come as that helicopter comes in and out. Not always, but generally it comes in, descends from the east and then exits directly to the west. So I, I think a, a little bit, a little bit of additional detail there that we've got the benefit of living through it. There's obviously the residential development to the east of campus. We can't see here, but I think everyone's sort of familiar with that. There's, we've received some feedback just to date as, as our helicopters come in and out, transporting patients from those residents to the east. It's that, that development's not as close to the helipad as this would be, but there's been some feedback from that group that we do everything we can to mitigate. But unfortunately, it's as part of operating helicopters. That's a part of it to some degree. So share those things to say that I think want, want council to be aware that if a, a residential development did come in there in that northeast corner, there almost certainly would be some level of disturbance or noise as the helicopters go in and out. Again, we, we don't really control when that happens. It, it operates twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. So at times that's during the day, at times that's during the middle of the night. So those, those are really the, the data points and things we wanted to leave with this group. Again, it's not really in support or against the development, but want to make sure that, that we're making the informed, most informed decision we can.
How often is the pad used?
It's highly variable.
On an annual basis?
Let, let me, I, I'll need to get both the team and get back and try to provide some.
Because if it's five times a day, that's a lot different than once a week.
Yeah. But we can provide some, some information to council so that you, so that you've got that information.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Great. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. I am not sure if I'm in it. And Nels Hill, maybe? I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the writing.
Wes Hill?
Wes Hill, yes. Thank you. I apologize. Sometimes it's hard to decipher.
Hi, counsel. My name is Wes Hill. I'm a partner and manager of the development. We also have the Maverick Site where that's going in, the lot in front of that. And then we have the other seventeen acres across that we're developing right now also. First of all, I just, yeah, I wanted to introduce myself so that you guys could know who I am. Fifteen years construction, Durango, commercial construction, residential and all of that stuff. So just to talk about the helipad just for a second, we have spoke with our apartment developer about this. Actually extensive conversations with him, Mark Williams also, and everyone is aware of the concern with the helipad being there. Recently spoke with, a meeting with the Mercy folks that we have contacted them to kind of coordinate this also. I don't think that any of our folks are really that concerned about it. We're putting measures into place as far as placement of buildings, soundproofing the walls. And I do know that Mercy has said that that helipad may not be there forever. They're talking about expansion. So there's a possibility that it could move up the hill or something like that also. So we're honored to be working on this project and provide this housing for Durango with these tenants on board with this project. I will say that we economically couldn't make it happen. So we're honored to have these folks on board. We, we've tried hard on, on this other stuff right here to attract commercial retailers. And we still, we, we struggle with it, but we still try every day in hopes that we can attract people to Durango. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more, we have Jay Dirksen. I'm sorry, I can't. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Tom, do we have anyone virtually that would like to comment?
We do not.
Not hearing.
Sorry, can you hear me? We do not.
Yes, who would like to speak? You want to share another comment? Okay, yeah, if you could make it quickly, that would be great. Thanks.
Good points. I appreciate you giving me just a second. One thing we did want to clarify related to the helipad. We are considering expansion plans to make sure we, we can provide the service to the community that we want. As part of that, that helipad is almost certainly not going to be able to move. So do agree, like there's expansion plans, but unfortunately, operating under the assumption that Mercy could move that is not one that we could, we could work with. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
The clarification. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, I think I will close the public hearing. With the staff or developer, like to respond again to any other questions, anything else? No? Good. Okay. Open up to council discussion.
Mark, what car dealership is considering going in there? Do they already exist somewhere else?
Yeah, I was just asking Wes, if it was public knowledge, but it's Durango Toyota.
And they, do they exist somewhere else right now and are moving there or is this a new development?
They're across the highway from Walmart.
Okay.
They're, they're basically the same company. You're just going to branch off to do a single Toyota.
And leave the Ford dealership at the Durango Motor Company site?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question, Mark. Thanks for the presentation. It's exciting to potentially have more housing. Like, obviously, that's one of our goals. Did the, I noticed in the planning commission minutes, there's a lot of discussion about the bike lanes going away. Did that change or?
Yeah, there was a little bit of confusion at the first meeting about, is this going to be four lanes? Is this going to be two lanes? And if it's four lanes, that affects what else can be on there besides cars. But if it is four lanes, that's not going to happen for a very long time.
Okay.
Thirty years. But right now, it's going to be two lanes with bike lanes.
Bike lanes. Okay, that's, I'm like, that's what I saw. I just wanted to make sure that that was in fact correct. Okay. I think that's all I had. Counselor Bossman?
Yeah, I actually have a similar question, but a bit more detailed. On, on Wilson Gulch Road, I think the bike lane is on the south side as a vertical grade separated bike path, bike pedestrian path. Is that right?
I think it's not vertically separated that much. It's that great.
Is it just a line on the road as well? Because there, isn't there that whole pathway, concrete trail that runs where the blue lines?
So there is a extra wide sidewalk essentially that I was referring to on Wilson Gulch Drive. And then there is also the completely separate Smart One sixty trail that is for bikes and pedestrians only. And as well as, I don't know if this offshoot has a name or not, but.
So would that be like on Florida Road? The bike pedestrian trail? Or would it be?
Sorry.
No, no, please. I think you got my question. So.
Okay. On Wilson Gulch would be similar to Florida. This cross section on Ewing Mesa would be, it wouldn't be the same. Florida has ten foot wide. Is a ten foot wide multi-use trail and this cross section has eight foot sidewalks on both sides. So close, but not quite there as well as the bike lanes on each side of the road.
And the reason I ask it is on the multimodal board, they're discussing best standards and better standards versus a painted line on the road for bikes to have something a bit more safer, substantial, and the better or best option probably would be vertically grade separated with a buffer and then a bike slash pedestrian pathway. This is not the final. This is just a discussion topic. But it's a pity because I see the, this primarily is the road, the Ewing Mesa Road, I guess. Is that the right word? Mixing up names. The Mesa Drive, yeah, no, the Mesa Drive Road. And if this is, has the potential in the long term to be an artery road that connects all the way up to Ewing Mesa Road, then we might want to make that already a high best standard for bike slash pedestrian.
No, I think that's a really good point. I have a meeting tomorrow with Transportation to talk about Ewing Mesa Drive. So engineering is going to be in the room as well. So if all three of us are in there, maybe we can come up with something.
Yeah, it might tie nicely into the Wilson Gulch Road multi-use. That obviously is not a multi-use pathway, is it? Or is it?
It functions like one.
Yeah. I know, like it's big.
It's big enough.
It's big enough.
Yeah, that's why I think it might be for do it, do it if that's part of it. But it will come back as a discussion point, probably in the next stages. But planning that seat to do, to do that level would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just want to echo what Jessica had to say about housing. Thank you. I, it's really important and the more inventory we have, the better off we are. So I appreciate that.
Yes, I would agree as well. Great opportunity. Good number. So exciting. I need a couple of motions.
Well, I'll make motion number one to approve the proposed South Fork Lot One R dash R conceptual plan, development plan with the findings in the staff report and as adopted during the public hearing process.
I'll second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes. Motion two?
I'll move to approve the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendments with the findings in the staff report and as adopted during the public hearing process.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes. Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item ten point two point two, a public hearing to consider the Animus Mountain Vista Preliminary Plan Development rezone and minor subdivision at fifty Animus View Drive. I believe we have Savannah. Thank you. And I will be right back. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening, council. Savannah Lidle, Community Development here for the review of the Preliminary Plan Development Animus Mountain Vista. This is a plan development rezoning and minor subdivision at fifty Animus View Drive. Most of you are probably familiar with this. It is an intersection of Highway five fifty, Main Avenue with Animus View Drive. It is the mild wild site. And that will remain here as the commercial use. It is near Pioneer Park. You can see up in the corner as well as the C dot building located at the bottom of the image and the river up north. So along the Main Avenue there, commercial area. This is a site from an aerial. You can see there's a lot happening right now. It is mild to wild. So their rafting business is there with a lot of their rafts and their trailers stored there currently. So the hope and the goal of this is to clean that up as well, making a more organized site as part of this plan development. This is the proposed plat. This is the subdivision. This will be a separate motion from the plan development and rezoning. But this is the proposed. planned development and rezoning. Um, but this is the proposed, so they will take this one parcel and divide it into two. One of the parcels will have the existing mild to wild building that will remain and a two thousand seven hundred square foot storage building will be built to the east of that. So that will be on one parcel and then on the other parcel will be the proposed tiny home community. This is twenty tiny homes, um, that will be on the western lot. And I'll show more of that. This is the site plan for that proposed tiny home community, so very similar to Escalante, if you guys are familiar with that. Uh, there will be twenty tiny homes that will range in size from twenty feet long to forty feet long. So that's what those different types A and type D are the, are referring to the length of those tiny homes. There are twenty eight parking spaces proposed. Um, on the drawing, it shows twenty nine, but one of those will need to be converted to um, ADA, um, so that will reduce it down to twenty eight. This meets the parking as it will provide one parking space for each of the tiny homes as well as allow for guest parking uh, there. Um, no parking signs will be installed along Animus View Drive as well. Staff had concerns about the storage building being up against Amos View Drive, but in discussions with the applicant after review by, um, planning commission, they are going to screen that with additional landscaping and also make it, uh, make the materials and the colors conform as well with the other tiny homes. So really make it blend in as much as possible. Um, this also will have, uh, stormwater feature and they want to put some public amenities, some places for picnics and people to gather, um, on the site as well. So provide that amenity space for those that will, um, be living in the tiny homes. The mild to wild owners will be providing the infrastructure for this tiny home community and then the spaces will be rented out by those that will bring their tiny homes in. The owners would like to, um, keep a couple of these, uh, for mild to wild employees and would like the option to have, uh, up to three of them have the potential for a vacation rental during the off season, which would be October first to May first. Uh, planning commission reviewed this and was in support of those, um, part-time vacation rentals up to three units for mild wild, for mild to wild to operate. Um, this was the revised landscaping plan. One of the concerns from planning commission as well as staff was that there wasn't enough landscaping and we have seen that as well with Escalante Village. That's the feedback we received back that there wasn't enough landscaping. So they revised the landscaping plan to incorporate more trees. They meet the requirements for, um, parking lot landscaping requirements as far as the number of trees. Uh, but they have located more around the perimeter of the site to allow for the tiny homes to move in and out if necessary. It didn't make sense to put a tree right in front of the tiny home and then not allow it to move out if necessary. There is a hammerhead provided to allow trash and, um, emergency services access. Uh, snow storage is met as well. So this is some of the tiny home character. This is the Escalante Village that is here in, in Durango and South Durango. So this is the similar type of character that they want to have for this Animus Mountain Vista. Uh, staff reviewed this and found that meets the comprehensive plan as far as density and increasing that infill of housing, providing that additional housing and, and a different type of housing too as well. Um, it was also reviewed against the North Main Character District Plan as providing that needed density to support those businesses along the North Main Avenue Character District. That was an important part of the plan to increase that density along the boundary of North Main Avenue. And it's appropriate in that it's mixed use as well and the mixed use commercial component is up against Main Avenue. And then the residential is along Animus View Drive. Review criteria as well and that it provides, that it meets comprehensive plan. It meets development pa- patterns. The property to the east is a mobile home park, so it's similar in capacity to that. Um, it's going to provide that high quality environment. It's going to, um, they're going to do a lot of public improvements, provide the sidewalk curb gutter as well as street trees, the landscaping on the property. Um, it has been have, it has had a traffic study to ensure that it meets street capacity. Um, they will provide all the infrastructure needed. There are no known natural hazards on this property and there is, and they're building out of the slope. This was posted a notice for the land use and development code and there was one comment provided during this time and it was to clean up the site, but they wanted to see that done. So I think that will be addressed as part of this. Um, there was a previous, when it, this went through for conceptual plan development review, there was one comment from the neighbor um, to the south that said they want a fence installed so that people would not park along Earl here or Bennett and then trespass across their property, um, which was thought was happening. And so the applicant was amenable to putting a fence along the property, um, to discourage that activity. So there will be two different motions. The first one will be, um, for the proposed preliminary plan development and rezoning. Um, staff has reviewed this and found that it meets, uh, the criteria with the following conditions. The future plans, the middles be in general conformance with the approved plan and in compliance with city development standards. The six foot fence just mentioned, reconstrued along the property line between the tiny home village and thirty seven fifty North Bennett Street. Landscaping shall meet the land use and development code landscape requirements for parking lots and buffer landscape requirements, which they have met with the latest some landscapes middle. All public improvements shall be to city standards. Completion of all required public improvements shall be secured through a public improvements agreement with adequate security provided and all verbal and graphic representations of the applicants or their agents shall be deemed conditions of approval.
And there's going to be a second?
There will be a second one that will be for the minor subdivision and staff recommends approval of this with the following condition. Um, oh, this looks exactly the same as previous because we don't need the fence for that one. Um, so there was, it is recommendation of approval. The condition would be that, yeah, you know, sorry that I don't have that on here. I thought I had.
The second, second approval recommendation?
I don't have that one.
I think this is in our.
Yeah, I had approved the Animus Mountain Vista Minor Subdivision at fifty Animus View Drive subject to planning conditions of the planning commission report. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you have it too. Great. All right.
And the applicants are online if needed.
Wonderful. Would the applicant and or developer like to make any comments? Even virtually or public open?
We have, if you can hear me, Elizabeth Boone has raised her hand.
Wonderful.
Elizabeth, you've been unmuted. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you all for your time today. This is Elizabeth Boone with Reynolds Ash and Associates. It's an agenda, so I'll be brief. Savannah did a great job. We feel this is a positive project which contributes a new type of housing option and offers a different price point than what is currently available on the market. We also think it will be a major improvement to the North Main Corridor. So with that, I'd like to mention our team today. We have with us Steve with PST. He is the civil engineer on the project. He was also the civil engineer on the Escalante Village Tiny Home project, so he's very familiar with this product. He's available for any questions. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Alex, who is the owner of Mild to Wild. And he'll introduce himself and speak briefly to the importance of this project to his operations.
Great, thank you.
Do you have me?
We can hear you, Alex.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Elizabeth, and thanks, counsel, for hearing our project, of course. Um, uh, Alex, I've been here since nineteen eighty-nine, running Mile to Wild and found that business in nineteen ninety-four. And it's been amazing to see the changes and the need for seasonal housing that have really come in that time. You know, when I started in business, I never really thought that I would need to help to address housing at this, at this level and, and it certainly has become an issue. And, and we're excited to be able to try to help people find a way that fits their lifestyle and allows them to live the way they want to live and also provides us with a, uh, an improvement to the north end of the corridor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any, anything else from the applicant or developer? Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome. I'm happy to answer questions about the project.
Okay, thank you. Please stay around. Um, I would like to open the public hearing. Do we have any live or public comments? Nope. Nothing virtually?
Nothing virtually.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Um, open up to council discussion. Comments, questions?
So I was involved in a couple of meetings earlier on about this project, like a long time ago. So I can't remember if it was on council or planning commission or multimodal. But there were some concerns brought up by the community that lives near the park around the corner. Um, the ones that, um, I believe want the fence up, um, in the Earl and Bennett area that, um, one of their challenges and, and I don't, can you, um, go back to the overhead that shows the current condition? Nope, not one. It's, it's at the end. There you go.
Yeah, that one.
That one. So one of their concerns is there's all this parking for mild to wild, um, buses and, and trailers and all the things that go on there. And they are concerned about where those will get parked when that new building is built there and when the tiny home is. So that was one significant concern. Um, the other is that oftentimes the customers for mild to wild go and park in that area around the, um, park and in, in, and I know it's public parking, but it's really a concern for them. Um, especially since I think only one side of that can be parked. Um, another question has to do with the condition of the sidewalk that runs on the east side of Camino, uh, directly out of mild to wild, all the way down to the next street. Um, the last time I went there, there, it didn't exist in many places. So how is walking pedestrian bicycle access going to be able? I mean, if you could go down there easily, you could get onto the River Trail very simply. Um, and currently that's actually, at least the last time I went there, which was not that long ago. Um, it was very, very challenging. Um, I really appreciate that the planning commission and the, um, applicant have looked at Escalante and how to improve it because I was on the planning commission with us when Escalante was approved. And having seen it after it's been constructed, and I know several of the planning commissioners mentioned this too, we were a little disappointed in how lacking in vegetation it was. And what I noticed in the pictures of Escalante and what I saw when I'm there is there are planter boxes in front of the, um, units. And this to me looks like it's going to be all paved parking in front of the units. So I'm wondering if there might also be an improvement with that. Will there be any EV hookups required, given our parking requirements?
There are none required for this project.
Why?
It's for multifamily and this wasn't considered multifamily. So there weren't per, directly per the code. It is something that, um, city council can require as part of the planned development agreement.
Okay, so that would come later?
That would come right now. So if that is something you guys want to include, it can be included as part of the planned development.
Okay. And then one more comment that I had was I'm concerned with the vacation rentals and the, um, cost of those. I, I had thought that there was conversation about off-season, uh, might be trying to coordinate with other businesses that could use that off-season so that there would be uh, workforce and, and middle income housing and not vacation rentals. Um, so I personally would prefer that it, it, they figure out a different way to gain revenue off of that than vacation rentals.
To answer your question, I'll start with the first one. Um, so they are intending on, you can see it here. They're going to have, um, bus parking and turnaround in this area. So that's where they will park their buses right there. Um, as far as Bennett Street, I can go up there. Um, they have put additional signs, I know, to restrict parking. I don't know, um, you know, other than that, what options there are to encourage people there. I think there's fifty parking spaces and applicant can verify that on the site to have people park there. But I know since this came through with conceptual that there have been, um, new signs put up limiting the hours of parking on North Earl and Bennett Street. Uh, was the sidewalk here?
So it's below the, no, it's below the triangle. So it's from, from that intersection south.
Right here.
From there south. Yeah.
Okay. Um, they, I will have to look again, but my understanding is that they are doing the public improvements along where the planned development is proposed and that they weren't going to do it further.
Expecting them to be responsible for that, but I'm concerned about that as a, as an access point. And I'm wondering what C dot is planning to do there and, you know, what their timeframe may be. That's something you can like update us on later. But I don't know how the people who live here are going to be able to walk or bike easily and safely down to where they could get on the River Trail, for example.
Understood. Okay.
Okay, do you, do you want to repeat question number two?
Did I get all the questions?
Got a lot of questions.
Well, she got the parking on Earl and Bennett and where are the, uh, mild to wild, uh, vehicles going to be parked?
Okay.
And the sidewalk we just discussed, we had the EV conversation, which I think maybe council needs to discuss a little bit further. And, um, then the, I'm happy about the upgrade from Escalante, but you know, maybe we could, they could talk about a little bit more vegetation in the front and the vacation rentals, I think we should talk about too.
I would look to staff. If you want to, can you provide any information on an EV? I don't honestly know what the cost is of that. Um, and so can you talk about that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of what the cost is, but, um, and I would have to look because I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe that there needs to be five EV ready? Can't remember off the top of my head what the requirements are for multifamily. So, um, I would have to look into what that requirement is and maybe it's something similar, similar to what we require for multifamily that could be required for this.
Five seems excessive for this development.
Yeah.
And is there EV stations nearby?
No.
No.
None on that north.
That I know of. I would have to look into that, but not that I'm aware of.
But that, but that was one of the things in our code that we just changed because we wanted EV where people parked and lived. And so I agree, five is probably excessive. Um, but one might be nice. EV ready anyway.
Um, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll go after you.
I was going to just see if, uh, the developer might want to respond to that.
Well, in the meantime, maybe I can give you my position. I, I, I hear a lot that, uh, business owners and developers find it overburdenous. And if the land use code or our requirements do not include, in this case, EV charging stations, then I find it maybe another example of excessive, uh, requirements that now are coming from council to impose additional requirements for development. So my first thought would be if this meets the current code land use and development code and, and went through planning commission and everybody's looks, I think it's a great opportunity to add tiny homes. Um, this property owner, if he wants to do vacation rentals and short-term rentals and long-term rentals, I, I, I understand. And I have, on top of it, he has issues with employee housing, so he's addressing an urgent need for his business. I, I think I'm supportive of this project. I have another comment, but this was the, the one for addressing, uh, counsel Baxter's, uh, requirement on EV and a potential discussion on short-term rental.
And I also like the idea that the, like, the sidewalk will be extended through his property because it's not there. There's no sidewalk there now. Um, and then the landscaping features where he's adding some trees and then cleaning up the property and that he's willing to do a fence. I actually used to live in the house right behind on Earl Street, literally right behind, um, mild wild. Um, and so I think that that's a great, it's great that he's willing to work with the community and understands what's going on. Um, I know the Michaels and I think that the desire to help his employees and provide housing is what their primary concern is. And I applaud that. Um, if you need to offset costs because. If you need to offset costs because your rafting guides go away in the winter and you can't get anyone from Perg to rent a tiny home because they live somewhere else, then I want them to have the ability to rent it out. And I have faith that they'll like do the right thing if the right thing is available, just because they've been in our community a long time. They love Durango, just like I do.
I appreciate that. What other comment did you have?
Oh, this is on the, so first, I, I appreciate this owner developing opportunity. So, that's good. Just want to acknowledge that. I, my comment is on the bike and pedestrian pathway because this road is a, the, the ex, the start of the exit road. Do I say that correctly? Down to Oxbow Park. And I think I saw that the sidewalk is included in this development, which I already think is fantastic if they want to do that. I think we, similar as my last comment, I'm not sure if you were listening or if you're working on this one here, but since this, this, this is the primary exit off of Main or 550 towards Oxbow, if we apply best standards for bike slash pedestrian safe vertically separated, if this is what multimodal in this case would, would require, but or recommend, I think this is the time to do it because as soon as this sidewalk is built and there's a line on the road for bikes, we're stuck with that approach for everything from Main Street or 550 to Oxbow. And I don't want to burden this property owner with that. I, I think we should maybe even consider the option to participate and to extend it to the corner to where the traffic light is. I'm not sure, it was a picture that showed that little section because I saw on the drawing that the owner was doing exactly from the corner to the corner of the red, the triangle here. So, there's a little piece missing. And I'm thinking, maybe we should step up and add that, including the upgrades to a higher, better standard so that in the future, everything, this is visionary stuff. We're taking long-term. Let's try and do something right, right off 550. So, everything ties back towards Oxbow in the same, in the same manner. That would be something I would like to see explored. Not sure if that is the part of this motion, but it is definitely something I would, maybe, is that something that other councilors?
I think in the process of doing this, I would, my son and I literally ran that, that road two days ago from my house. We ran down this road to Oxbow and then ran the River Trail back up. And this, I mean, you're running in a single file line and it's really, there's lots of traffic on it. I didn't miss your drive. And I mean, not that I was like gonna die or anything, but I think that it'd be great for a better.
And the mobile home park, yeah, there's.
And Oxbow, and Oxbow's widely used now. I know it's separate, but yes, I'd support while we're looking at this.
Okay, prior to you being on council, we had a major conversation about Animus View Drive in which the speed limit was dropped to 25 miles per hour. And one of the challenges with Animus View Drive is the county, when it belonged to the county, didn't purchase easements on either side of it. And so, to do the kind of quality work that we would like to see there is almost impossible. And we've had engineering studies done and we've had a lot of other things done. So, I applaud that concept because I agree with it, but I don't know how it's actually going to come to fruition. And so, I would hesitate to, I would allow for it to be capable of being done, but I wouldn't build it until we were certain that we could do something more with it. That would be my concern.
And that's not knowing that there, we didn't have easements.
Right, right.
So, is it something staff can look into?
So, at this point, we are requiring that they put in that sidewalk and a bike lane, which we know at this point won't continue past, but our hope is to continue that bike lane all the way through Animus View Drive. So, this is the first piece of that. So, they are putting that in and that is part of the proposal.
Can you clarify what you just said? Is it bike lane or is it the sidewalk?
It is both. It is a sidewalk and a bike lane.
And is the bike lane a line on the road or is it this, the one like on Florida and the one we just discussed?
No, it's a, it's a painted.
And that's where I guess my concern keeps coming back.
That's where the easement issue comes in.
If they have the line on the road, officially that is the bike section, unless it's, is it the bike in the middle of the road like we have on downtown?
It is not a, no, it's not a shero. It's an actual bike lane. And we really, I mean, we're squeezing that in per standards of what a bike lane width should be and the sidewalk width should be in the road. So, I, it, it would be difficult, I think, and challenging. I get where your point is. It would be amazing if we could do something more like a complete street like Florida is, but I think with this, we're, we are excited to at least start this process of putting in a bike lane on this road.
If, I, I'm not gonna hammer on this, but I think if you have a section of the road dedicated by painted line for bike, it would be the same distance if you raise it. So, you would have the ability to make bike pedestrian pathway with the same with your sidewalk and your, and maybe this gets too detailed. Maybe it's something that would, that you would be willing to look into when this project goes to the next level. But hopefully, we do look into it a little bit more because of the starting point of this street towards Oxbow.
Yeah, I'll just comment. I, I agree. I think that now would be the time to look into it if we can. If staff could just research that as an opportunity. I mean, I think I'm hearing a lot of discussion that it may or may not be a possibility, but while we're doing it, it sounds like there's council support to look into the possibility of making that improvement if we can from, from the main road. I too really am excited about this project and I think it's wonderful that we're starting to see new housing options and new housing types at new high housing price points in our community. It's exactly what we need. I know Escalante is very popular with their tiny homes. And so, I'm really, I'm thrilled about this development and I do understand how helpful it will be for the Michaels, for their seasonal employees with their lodgers tax. We talked a lot about year-round opportunities through employment, but this is providing some year-round opportunities for housing, which is great for a lot of their staff. So, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to support it. And I want to see if there's any, and I too would support staff at least looking into the ability to continue that improvement in the road because they are making a substantial investment in that. It'd be nice to continue it for safety. So, any other comments or questions from council? Any other comments from the developer? Okay, let's look for recommendations.
Okay, I will move to approve the Animus Mountain Vista preliminary plan development and rezone at 50 Animus View Drive. Subject to findings and conditions as stated in the April 25th, 2022 Planning Commission Staff Report.
I'll second. Further discussion?
Yeah, this is exciting. I would agree with you guys. And I love that it's on that end of town because what you said Savannah about being able to create more interest and more people for the business benefit, I think it's great.
Excellent. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes. And then I will make a motion to approve the Animus Mountain Vista Minor Subdivision at 50 Animus View Drive. Subject to findings and conditions as stated in the April 25th, 2022 Planning Commission Staff Report.
Second.
Further discussion from council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you. Exciting developments coming on in our community. So, moving on now to introduction of ordinances, general business items, 12.1 Certificate of Sufficiency for Citizens Voice Initiative Petition. From what I understand, but we'll, we'll also turn to Dirk on this. No action is required on this agenda item. Just important that we acknowledge that the Citizens Voice Initiative petition, petition has been delivered and accepted. Anything else Dirk that you'd like to add?
Sorry, there's a new gadget. We have to push to talk. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, is council would like, does council want to add anything to that agenda item before we move on to 12.2?
Does that initiative need to be read or anything like that?
Not from.
The, the charter requires that it be submitted to council by the clerk. That's been done. It's been delivered via the, the packet. So, if you, if you wanted to make a motion to accept it, that would be fine. It's not technically required by the charter. So, I don't think there's any other action to be taken at this point, but that receipt does trigger the next step that we'll be talking about in the next item.
So, would we be reading it then in 12.2? Because.
Want to read it.
Well, I think the public that's listening needs to hear what we're talking about. That would be my concern. I don't know. Mayor Protem Yusuf, you're the lead on this, but I think it would be good if the public heard what the initiative actually said.
That's fine with me. I don't have it up in front of me if someone here would like to read that.
So, do you want to read the, the order, the proposed ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is City of Durango ordinance. Oh, 2022, number yet to be assigned. An ordinance amending a portion of chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango by the amendment of the Land Use and Development Code Use/Zone Matrix, Section 2-1-3-4, by changing Protective Services Fire Police stations in the CB-Central Business Zone from A Allowed Uses to C Conditional Uses to require public hearings on the appropriateness of the proposed land use and adding additional language, Section 2-2-3-5, to read that in the CB Central Zone Fire and Police stations shall conform to plans and guidelines adopted by the city council. That's the title of the ordinance. Whereas Durango has benefited from a rich history of public engagement, the citizens of Durango deserve a meaningful opportunity to discuss in public hearings the citing of Protective Services, Fire and Police within the Central Business District and potential impacts on public health, safety and welfare. And whereas the City of Durango was responsible for adopting regulations which protect the health, safety and welfare of the public and for mitigating actions which prevent any risk to the health, safety and welfare of the public. Whereas the ordinance is, this ordinance is presented to the city council as an initiative in accordance with Article 7 of the City Charter. And whereas the city clerk has certified the sufficiency of the submitted initiative petition and has presented it to the city council for action. And whereas a public hearing is here to forbid held before the city council and the council has determined subsequent to said public hearing, that the proposed amendments in additions to chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango would be in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Durango and are important to protect the health, safety and welfare of the public. Now, therefore, the City of Durango hereby ordains the following sections be amended in chapter 27 of the City Code of Ordinances. Section 2-1-3-4 in the Use Zone Matrix shall classify police and fire stations in the CB Central Business Zone District as a C Conditional Use and eliminate police and fire stations as a, as an A Allowed Use and create a new reference to Code Section 2-2-3-5. And then section, the proposed section 2-2-3-5, Standards for Institutional Uses shall have a new section, Table 2-2-3-5F as follows. In the CB1 CB Zone, in the CB Central Business Zone District, Fire and/or Police Stations shall be in conformance with all adopted City of Durango planning documents as follows. Downtown Design Guidelines 2004, Design Guidelines for the Downtown Overlay District 2004, Downtown Vision and Strategic Plan 2006, Durango Comprehensive Plan 2017, City of Durango Strategic Plan 2021, Multimodal Transportation Plan 2021, Durango Midtown Urban Renewal Plan 2021 and any future related plans. These sections shall become effective on June 16th, 2022, City Council of the City of Durango, signed by the mayor. Again, this is, yeah, just to be clear, this is orders proposed by the proponents.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Moving on now to 12.2 Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Request for a Public Hearing for the Citizen Voice Initiative Proposed Ordinance. And I thought perhaps it would be, it would be wise to ask Kevin Hall to come and discuss with council what the impacts of the amended code would be and answer any questions for council. And Dirk is available for questioning and clarification as well.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and counselors. Kevin Hall, Managing Director of Community Development. I think before I get into any kind of protracted discussion about the ordinance, I guess I'd ask Dirk for a little bit of opinion on what level of discourse we can have on the, what staff sees relative to the proposed ordinance in that you're in a position to decide as to whether you want to actually have a public hearing on this matter or whether you want to defer it to an election. And I know we need to be cognizant and cautious of how we speak to this issue prior to that decision being made, I suppose.
Is that, is that what, is that one of the decisions where we would make tonight is whether it is, goes to ordinance or goes to election?
Well, I, I think the primary item that was included in the agenda was to determine initially whether council has a preference between those two choices. And, or to then choose a path. I mean, you, you are required under the charter to make, to, to take one of those two actions within a timeframe. It's actually a very short timeframe now. So, if you want to adopt an ordinance, and even the proposed ordinance references a public hearing, there's no shortcut in the charter to avoid the normal process of adopting an ordinance. So, if you want to adopt this as an ordinance, you need to go through the normal process of scheduled by a hearing, first reading, second reading, and that has to occur effectively between now and June 3rd, which is the Friday. A resolu, the other option would be to call a special election. That would be done by resolution. That doesn't actually require a public hearing. But again, this is not really agendized for that decision tonight. So, I hope that answers your question. But that also has to, that decision on a resolution also has to occur between now and June 3rd.
So, to be clear, just to clarify, if we go to a public hearing, we have a hearing that anyone can come talk to and do a public process and then we make a decision there as to adopt it.
Well, I think you have a, a several choices here, actually. You could have a public hearing solely on the question of the ordinance, for instance. You could have a public hearing that would include the possibility of reviewing the ordinance and the discussion about adopting a resolution to send it to an election. So, you could set a hearing tonight that is, and that's the way the agenda doc was phrased, was for to review the ordinance and/or to review a resolution. So, you take public input on the, all of the global question, right? So, I think, did that answer your question?
No, not from me. So, my, so my question is what actions can happen tonight? So, do, can we give direction to, for example, to have a reading of the ordinance and a public hearing about it for sometime in the future?
Yes.
And we can also and/or give direction to go ahead and do a resolution for an election tonight. I mean, not tonight we would have the election, but the resolu, we would give that direction tonight.
Yes.
And so, subsequently, we're going to have to have another meeting before June 3rd.
Possibly two more meetings when we can talk about the calendar.
Okay, so that, okay, that, so they're not scheduled, normally scheduled meetings because we don't have one.
There are no regularly scheduled meetings.
We have to have additional meetings.
We're gonna have to have at least one and perhaps two meetings between now and the third to accomplish this result. So, this is confusing, but it, it would be possible tonight to have a motion to set a hearing on the adoption of the proposed ordinance by, that would be a hearing and/or you could include a hearing on the question of adopting the resolution for the election by giving staff direction to both have an ordinance ready for first reading after that public hearing, whenever you set that. And/or to have a resolution prepared for the same night that would allow you to adopt the resolution following the hearing. And I know that's public Thurs, but it's confusing, but.
So that. I'm just confused though, Dirk, because in the past we have had things where we had a discussion about an ordinance. And then there was an item on the agenda where if we chose to go forward with the ordinance, we could have the public hearing that night, that same night.
Well, the we would have to publish notice of the public.
I know, I understand that. We've done that in the past.
Yes.
We have. We have had the discussion on the agenda and we've had the public hearing on the agenda if we chose to move from that discussion to that public hearing.
Yes.
I'm confused as to why we didn't do that for today's topic.
Well, because council hasn't acted on it and we really did staff can't keep staff doesn't have the authority to set a public hearing. And the charter is clear that city council has the authority to set the hearing on an ordinance.
For citizens. It's like twin views, like we talked about it and we all decided that that's the way we wanted to move forward with the double. And so they did. That's what staff did, right? But we didn't decide that today. We have not come and seen all this information and her and heard and decided that that's what we wanted to do today as a council.
So just to also clarify, I think part of your question was you could schedule a hearing and first reading of the ordinance on the same night. And you could schedule a hearing on the resolution to set the election and vote on the resolution the same night. Hope that helps clarify that.
I, if I may, I see what you're saying is three options. One, we go with the resolution today. And that will be later on for the ballot question. The other option is we go with adopting the current ordinance and will for that we do a public hearing, first reading, second reading. Or this is where the confusing part I think comes in. We basically postpone this whole meeting to next meeting and we have the same discussion whether we go forward with the ordinance or we go forward with the resolution. In either case, it is the ordinance that is to be either approved or going to a ballot. It is not going to be a changed ordinance. It is not going to modify anything of the order. That's what we are by our charter supposed to do.
Your option is to adopt the ordinance in the in the format that it's in now with no substantial changes. That's correct. I think that the decision on whether to pick a path tonight begs the question about whether you want to have a hearing or not to to discuss this. One of the one item I neglected to mention is that typically when we do an amendment to the land use code, you take you take input from the planning commission before you have your hearing. So as it turns out, the planning commission meets on Monday, the 23rd. So you could get input from them on a hearing after that, so that you could conduct your own hearing and potentially have a first reading on that night. So it may help to start thinking about talking about a calendar a little bit. Because this is confusing without kind of getting down to that kind of an item, but since the planning commission meets on the 23rd, which is Monday night, then you could possibly have a hearing on the ordinance and first reading. Say the 25th or the 26th, something like that would be Wednesday or Thursday.
I think is that we're trying to.
Calendar shows that Mayor Noseworthy for me returns back to town 25.
No time to be chat legged.
We would be looking at potentially May 26 then for a public hearing.
Potentially, yes, that they would work for a public hearing and potentially first reading of the ordinance. And a public hearing on this.
Potentially a resolution.
Right, that's right. So we will have both of those options available on that night. So.
After we get planning commission's recommendation from on the 23rd, since they haven't had a chance to look or talk or.
They've had no input on this whatsoever.
If I could just chime in, I'm sorry to send you in a different direction than intended. Mayor Protem, the planning commission, we didn't schedule a public hearing with them because this is all kind of coming right now. But we do have an opportunity to take it to them and have conversation with them about their interpretation. And we would discuss it with them and they could provide their feedback to you in the form of a recommendation. But it wouldn't be a, you know, the the charter allows this process. But it really is very different than what the land use code process would be for a code amendment. So but we do have a really good window here to get feedback from the planning commission. If you were to hold a meeting next week, then we would bring, we could bring you a more comprehensive staff eval as well as the planning commission input. If you are taking the approach that you were just discussing. I could certainly give you some just general observations of the difference between where things are under the current code and the way that it's being proposed. If you're interested in that this evening, I think that's probably fair to to provide that clarity if there's need to do so.
Before we do that, I might then suggest we continue the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's finish the calendar.
Calendar. Yeah. So let's assume for a moment that you will hold a hearing on the 26th, which would again present both options, both options. One would be to have first reading of an ordinance follow the hearing or adopt a resolution after the hearing. If you adopt the resolution after that hearing, then again, because there's a resolution can be adopted in one evening, you would not need any further action after that. If you adopt the ordinance on first reading on the 26th, then you would need another meeting between the 26th and the third to do a second reading.
May I suggest something?
Yes.
Is it? I'm just looking at the scenario, how the way this plays out. If planning department makes a recommendation or feedback or the planning commission, let's say negative, we're still going to bring it to resolution. Yeah, because we have no choice. Go to the to a ballot. We have to do something, either we adopt it or it goes to ballot. So even if in the case that the planning department and the planning commission say, no, we don't support this. We still have to bring it to a ballot.
At least we get some additional.
I get it. And so that is one scenario. The other scenario, if they would say this is a great or they support it in general, then it would be something we could consider. And maybe that is a discussion we could have now is, is there even an interest to not go to a ballot or is there an interest? What is what is council feel? Do you feel like? Because if you feel like it should be voted upon by our community and there's four counsels that say let's bring it to a vote because this is something that was brought up by a group in the community. Then we can make, we can skip.
Do you feel one way or another strongly?
I have, I have, yeah, I feel a certain way. Yeah. Do you?
Well, yeah, you just asked if we did, and so I didn't know if you wanted to start and go and start talking about.
If you want to have that discussion today. The other, I'll just throw out another option, though, and the idea. One idea that was relatively attractive to me, just because I I liked it. I believe in the hearing from our community and listening to our community as much as possible. So the option of meeting potentially on the May 26 as a first option and setting a public hearing for that date. At that time, we will have, we would have allowed participation and input from our planning commission, which I I would appreciate that input and also allow the opportunity for the community again to, under that agenda item, make comments. And if there's other people that come forward and rec, you know, if we publish this and people see it and they recognize that it's clear in the agenda doc that this is a public hearing for this purpose, we may hear from other community members as well. And so I'm always interested in doing that is all I'm saying. And so, so, you know, we can, we you it's fine if you want to share your opinion right now. My my thought is that me, myself personally, I kind of like I like to usually try to hear from everyone and then process and.
And this is the planning commission that's missing, the planning department. I I'm perfectly fine with that. So I guess we'll look at the calendar.
If if, but that's just, you know, unless you really feel that you're ready.
It's all good.
You know, and that then other counselors should weigh in too.
Yeah, I would rather hear what comes out of the planning commission meeting, although I think it's still up to council and it's actually in council's lap to make that decision irregardless of what planning commission recommends.
I agree with that. And I think that I'm not like shoving it. I don't want to seem like we're like shoving it off in their lap. I I'm more, I guess, I'm concerned about is that I think this. I don't, I want to say, and so, yeah, like I want to make sure like this initiative is one of the things I firmly believe in. I want community members involvement in politics, legislation, development is what we need more of. And I firmly believe that, especially in this current political climate, in the context of what's happening in our world outside of Durango. I do feel like this is sort of undermining the process in terms of we haven't even had a chance to go. Planning commission hasn't seen it. The process that the city has for development. This initiative isn't allowing for us to do that. The city hasn't received an official submittal to do anything on the property. And so I think that I want to hear from the planning commission, just what their thoughts are, what like any guidance they I trust them. They're part of, you know, what who we listen to and what we and do. And so I would support that. Okay.
So Dirk, you you mentioned no substantive changes to the ordinance as brought forward by the initiative. What does that mean? Can can that ordinance be more prescriptive? Or what 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 do you mean by substance?
I think it needs, I think substantive means to me. They proposed a date, for instance, of the an effective date of the 16th. So if we can't meet that date by how it gets adopted, I think that's procedural. I don't think the charter contemplates making it either more or less prescriptive. I think the idea is that citizens can initiate an ordinance and council either adopts it as is or sends it to an election. So I don't think you can alter its provisions that would in a substantial way changes the way it operates, either more or less restricted.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Yeah. So back to the calendar.
I mean, we could go back to the calendar. I think that.
26 works for me.
The 20.
It works for me virtually. I'll be virtual.
Okay.
But I will, I'll make it a priority.
Boards and commissions orientation, does that affect anything? I just want, I just.
So the we're looking at the 26th and possibly what other date? June 1st. Just throwing it out there.
Good catch it. The 30th is Memorial Day. So it would need to be the 34th. And by the way, we would need to, if you do first reading on the 26th, then the clerk's office needs to publish it. They typically publish on Sunday. So we could do it Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. I assume you don't.
We have a 9R city council meeting on Wednesday.
We don't have a.
I have a lot of meetings, so I I'm gonna see if I can make him.
We would love you.
Well, there's five counselors, so four is enough.
Right. Really hope you can, though. I mean, is there a time that might work for you?
Well, this is what I'm looking at. I mean, we say one date that there's not even a time for it. So.
This is on the 26th.
Can we just send send some times and dates?
Well, tonight we would need to set at least the first hearing night.
Yeah.
The hearing day, because council has to set the hearing on the ordinance. That has to happen tonight.
Well, what about the 25th?
I'm, I think Barbara.
So can you do any time on the 26th?
Yeah, I'll make, I mean, if that's the only date and it has to be Barbara will be here. So that's already good. And the three of you are here. So I'm going to try and make it as well. And then if something goes wrong or if it's not necessary.
Is there a time that is more?
Yeah, that maybe.
Mornings is always better. 11 o'clock. Can we do 11?
Yeah.
Well, but I don't want to fix up everybody's time at 11 just and then say, okay, man, I had something run later.
Well, I I just would say also, just part of the purpose is to have public comment. So having, you know, public comment and public hearing. So you can set it at 11. There's no prohibition on that, but I would have, you know, consider that that might be difficult for people to appear at the hearing.
Except for people can come in virtually, you know, maybe what if it was over lunch?
We can be present.
That 6 o'clock, would it be a better time than like for public participation?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then again, that assuming that you want to set that on the 26th, then we could tentatively set the second date for the second reading. Again, that they may or may not be needed depending on the action you take on the 26th.
Correct.
So but it would be nice to clear people's calendars now.
That's right.
So that they don't become any more cluttered.
On the first, we have a joint 9R city council meeting, I believe, at 4 o'clock. Yes.
Also keeping in mind that that meeting, the second meeting would be short. It would simply be a second reading. There would be no more public input at that point. So that could be a very short, the second meeting could be very short.
And then we would have. Would we make, we would have an.
You would have a second reading of, yeah, you just have to have a motion to prove it on second reading.
What date was that? 31st?
The first, the first or the fourth of 31st. I.
Yeah, Tuesday is the 31st, the Wednesday is the first and Thursday is the second.
31st would be better for me. First is graduation for my. But I can do it.
It's all hard.
I'll make it.
So did we make a time on the 26th?
I don't think we did. We did not yet.
I wrote down 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I think I I think.
Evening.
I think that the evening, because we're going to take public comment.
Right.
And I think that's really important for people to be here for that.
Okay, let's do that.
The second one doesn't matter because we're not taking public comment. So.
Okay, I agree. Let's do 6 o'clock on May 26 for the first public hearing.
Excellent.
For a public hearing.
Right. And well, we'll discuss the motion in a moment, but that will be followed by possible action, either, you know, first reading of an ordinance or adoption of a resolution on that night.
So this will be a special meeting?
This would be a special meeting. Both of these would be special.
So May 26 at 5, 6 PM?
6 PM.
And then the second meeting will be on June. No, are we going to do May 31st? Or June 1st?
31st or first works for me, for me, either one of them.
Olivier.
It's going to be, that's going to be such a short meeting. I mean, everybody can do it by phone or virtual.
Oh, that's true.
Because it's just five minutes.
And you prefer the 31st?
I prefer the 31st, but I can make whatever work. And it doesn't matter what time then, as long as because we're not trying to accommodate public comment. So as long as it all works for all of us.
Yeah. Right. Good point. Okay, later on.
Which one did you say works better for you, Jessica?
31st.
31st is, so is there?
Anytime after 10:30 because I have the CEC meeting.
And I have a noon that I have to attend for an hour and a half.
But if it's just jumping online, I can do it at 10:30.
Yeah.
So what are we picking 10:30 or 11?
Check real quick. I have something that day too. I have something that I could I do, could we do noon on the 31st?
I have a noon to 1:30.
Do we do two? Okay, 2 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. 2 PM?
Yep.
And staff, please send Mayor Noseworthy an email as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Well, let's let's make a, let's get through the motion phase here.
Yes. Okay.
And that would be the Zoom meeting on the.
31st? Good idea.
So 2 o'clock.
We probably have to have the the language for those meetings clarified too, yeah, but we can only do that after the 26th.
Well.
He's gonna.
We'll talk about a motion there in a moment.
Okay.
Ready, but what I would suggest based on what I'm hearing is that you have moved to set a special meeting on May 26th at 6 PM for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on two items. The first item being the adoption of an ordinance to adopt the ordinance, the initiated ordinance. The second item would be to have, you know, the same hearing on the question of adopting a resolution to send the question to an election. We didn't talk about election dates, but there are really only two dates that are available. That would be August 2, August 9. You could make that decision at that time. We could bring a resolution that we could fill in that day. And then agendize two items after the hearing. One for first reading of the initiated ordinance. Or the second item would be adoption of the resolution to send the item to an election. Is that clear?
So you have to. So you have to have the draft, the version of the ordinance, the version of the resolution, and we have one public hearing for discussion in both.
So I would so move what Attorney Nelson said.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please, Ben.
Counselor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Baxter.
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Youssef.
Yes.
And then Dirk, should we make a motion to, if necessary, hold a second meeting on the 31st at two o'clock to do the second reading of the ordinance and approval?
I'll second.
Did you, I think it's a special meeting at, what'd you say, two o'clock?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a motion in a second for the discussion. Roll call please.
Counselor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Baxter.
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Youssef.
Yes. Anything else?
Not on that, no.
Okay. Do, can we please be sure to include it in the Planning Commission agenda and get that taken care of? So there's plenty of warning, so we can get their input. Wonderful. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to discussion and possible action concerning the establishment of a trash and recycling reserve fund policy. Must be Jared.
Jared Biggs, Assistant Finance Director. Thank you for inviting me to speak on something slightly less arcane than ordinances. So, so this discussion, I wanted to provide a little bit of feedback. Finance Department has been working on financial policies as a specific effort. And this is a recommendation from the Salt Fab. We did invite a couple of members of Salt Fab to come. They were unable to make it this evening. But they did recommend at their meeting on the third of this month to a trash and recycling policy, a fund balance policy of 25%. And it is, was included in the packet as well. So I am available to answer any questions, and I would also lend to Counselor Buell if she has any input as the liaison to that board.
No, just that this is kind of going along. We're taking, you know, different reserve fund policies and pushing them through. We're holding on a couple of them because they're doing a water, or just a water rate study, or water and sewer rate study?
There, there will be a water and sewer rate study, so we're holding on those.
We don't want to do a reserve policy. They're actually gonna work together while they're doing the water rate study. So we're gonna hold off on that. You probably won't see that till December. But this one, and then there's another one we're gonna do maybe before then.
Yeah, we're, we're going to bring others such as transportation and potentially airport as well, just covering all the enterprise funds as we have covered the general fund.
Yeah.
All in an effort to have additional financial transparency and achieve, you know, the financial excellence that you guys have set out as goals for us.
Are you going to say something?
He's ready, just in case. You gotta push the button. So just gotta wait. But no, I don't have any further comments.
They must have fixed that while we were talking. So we did a rate change for trash and recycling recently. And that had to do with estimating costs for a future recycle center.
Yes, yes.
So where are we right now currently with our reserve? Is it 25% now? What is it?
So that policy did consider a 25% reserve. So this, this, you know, codification would be of that policy that was proposed in that.
So that policy will help us create a 25% reserve as well as plan for future capital needs?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for being here again. It says a three-month, 25% reserve level against the operating expenses. Is that consistent with, I guess that's consistent with all the other enterprise funds. Is it so, or is it very?
So, so it can vary. If you, if you look at, you know, GFOA for guidance, they will say, look at your volatility of your revenue in order to evaluate whether you should accept additional risk or potentially be able to have a smaller reserve and accept a little bit higher risk. But 25% is generally accepted in a lot of cases for enterprise operations. In, in theory, if, if any enterprise operation was to not have revenue for three months for some reason, say COVID, right? People stop paying their bills, whatever it is, you would be able to use that fund to kind of weather that downturn.
Yeah. No, I. Other funds within the city have a reserve fund policy and are they also at 25%?
As of now, the general fund. And then there have been proposed policies for water and sewer, but as, as was mentioned, those are on hold. Water is at 25%. Sewer is actually at 16. And then this is kind of the fourth policy that's being proposed, and that is at 25%.
And then, this is maybe a little bit unanticipated, but, and this is to cover risk and changes, et cetera. Is it beneficial to have for every fund, reserve fund policy? Or is, is there a possible, is there ever had a discussion at the Salt Fab to have, let's say, the general fund have the reserve fund? And if anything happens with the water line break or whatever, then, and there's no fund balance available, because whatever happened, it's unlikely. I should have picked another fund because the water fund is 20 million.
We, we talked about like that, but it's best practices to have each, each enterprise fund have its own reserve policy, and then showing that it can cover its own expensive, its expenses. It's like transparency and all that stuff.
The other thing would have to do, if you were going to bond in order to go for building something, to have you, once you're, the fund that's looking for that, to have their own reserve.
Well, is it, is, it's not for capital expenses. I think it is for extreme events, wildfire or whatever. So the, that discussion has been had to, to have it not in one fund, but for every individual fund, have a reserve policy.
Counselor Bosmans, yes. And it is kind of twofold. For, for example, the sewer fund, since there are debt covenants, it has to carry its own fund balance. And so it, it is kind of multifaceted. And by nature of enterprises within the state of Colorado in particular, you can start getting shade of Tabor implication if you are using general fund dollars to backfill an operation. So that, we could go down a number of rabbit holes for that. But those are some of the reasons that have been discussed, why we would do fund balances by enterprise and not necessarily use the general fund as kind of the catch-all.
I, I think as long as you had the discussion and it's been explored, it's good. Another question I had, and this is gonna be specific. So some of the money goes from the enterprise funds to the sewer funds. And the expenses that I saw that are booked against it is sometimes depreciation. A, a big chunk of the expenses, maybe I should look at you. The, the expenses, the primary expense is depreciation. Now, depreciation is not really an expense. It is just, you park the money somewhere and you're supposed to replace it. But if it's booked as an expense, my question is, where did that money go to? Is it still in an enterprise fund and part of the reserve, or is it placed elsewhere?
So if I understand it correctly, and I would ask Cynthia to correct me if I am wrong. Whenever you do depreciation, you would also book an asset. So if you were to book depreciation as an expense, it would also be an asset to that fund. So as you say, on a cash basis of accounting, depreciation is not an expense, right? So it is really just keeping the governmental accounting practice. That's why depreciation is in there. So you, we kind of ignore that for cash accounting efforts.
And, and I think that's where the confusion is, because if an enterprise fund, let's say the trash and recycling fund, books an expense, an expense of funds moving from that enterprise to the sewer fund, that money is out of that first fund. But then I see the depreciation expense in, in the sewer fund. So normally, if you look at the proper balance sheet, you would have the asset drop in value and then the depreciation. So on both sides of the equation, you have the same amount, because the depreciation is expense, but the asset reduces. But by moving it out of there and then putting the depreciation on there, I, I do not understand where that money went. Because if you go by fund balance, maybe it's still in the original fund, because there is no.
I, I may let Cynthia speak to that, because I'm gonna bugger it up.
Thank you, Counselor Bosmans. From an accounting theory standpoint, if there, if depreciation exists, there was already a capital expense. We've already purchased a capital asset, and that would be that cash outflow and the expense. And then, then that, those assets get depreciated over time.
So.
So the cash piece has already occurred.
So if I look on the sewer fund on Open Golf, and I see the breakdown of expenses, and I see one, there's only one line item I see, which is, you know, there's a couple of line items, but the major one is depreciation. It's not really depreciation. It's actually purchase of an asset.
The concept of depreciation is to recognize the expense of an asset purchased over time as you use that asset. So the expense would have already occurred.
Does the sewer fund have a balance sheet?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Asset goes onto the balance sheet and then gets depreciated into the expenses?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the way the sewer fund works is that the departments and the other funds pay for the, have the expense of the original asset. The sewer fund is, is only for the replacement of those assets. But once they are replaced and we have a second asset, then the sewer fund sees that depreciation. But the original asset gets depreciated in the fund when, from which it was originally purchased.
So would I see that money go back to the enterprise fund then? I, I, I think there's several things that have been said that maybe need some more thought, because the assets are not part of the sewer fund. It's what I understand.
So the depreciation occurs in whichever fund purchased the asset, whether it's surf or enterprise fund. The enterprise funds, if they're contributing to surf for asset replacement, then they will see an expense in the form of a transfer
Yep.
out from that fund, from the enterprise fund into the sewer fund.
Yep. So that money, the asset that you're, that you're depreciating in an enterprise fund, you're depreciating by putting money away in sewer fund, but the.
No, not, not, not exactly that. So will, there would just be a straight-up expense out of the enterprise fund as they transfer funds into the sewer fund. The sewer fund would purchase the, the replacement asset, and it would be depreciated there over time.
So when, when a vehicle is purchased in an enterprise fund originally, the cost of that is an asset into the enterprise fund, and the cash comes out of the enterprise fund, and then it's depreciated within that enterprise fund. When that vehicle's no longer, it's past its useful life, and it's disposed of. In the meantime, that enterprise fund has been contributing to the sewer fund in order to be able to replace it at the end of that useful life. So when the end of the useful life happens, then the sewer fund purchases a new asset. And with the money that was contributed by the enterprise fund, that asset goes on the surf's balance sheet, and then it's depreciated within the sewer fund itself. And that continues for every subsequent vehicle that replaced that first vehicle, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
So in the, there is, because I've only seen the sewer fund balance structure with expenses and revenue. Is there, where, where would I find the, the sewer balance sheet with all the assets that fall under the sewer fund?
When the sewer fund purchases an asset, initially it shows up as an expense, and then at the end of the year, we capitalize that expense. So we create an asset out of it and reduce the expense. So the expense then shows up over time as a depreciation expense. But it's not in the same year that it was purchased.
No, I understand. But there should be somewhere in, in a breakdown, I guess, of the balance sheet, what makes up the sewer assets.
We do, we in fact do have a listing of all the assets by fund that would incorporate all of the vehicles and equipment purchased with the sewer dollars.
But they would be under surf, because surf depreciates those assets.
If we purchase the asset with sewer funds, yes, it would be an asset on the asset listing for the sewer fund.
Can we try to stay?
I am, yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm, maybe the last comment is, I would like to explore this more. And I have difficulty trying to understand how I can get more information.
I think a meeting was offered to set up, wasn't it?
Well, I think, you know, I can tell you have questions. That's why I didn't want to interrupt you. But I'm not sure that now is the right time or place. And so, yeah, you could follow up with staff for sure. I'm sure they would be very happy to answer questions. And if not, you also too can bring it up again in new business. If you, if you come up with other ideas and solutions and/or want to share with council or whatever. But right now, I think we need to focus on this, yeah, fund, trash and recycling fund reserve. Any other thoughts, questions?
So action on this, you would like us to move to adopt this? Is that the?
Yeah, the, the, the recommended action would be to, by motion, move to recommend the trash and recycling fund balance policy.
So moved. I'll second. Further comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Youssef.
Yes. Okay, moving on to discussion 13.1, discussion and possible action regarding the assignment of council liaisons to city boards and commissions. I'm gonna start.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think this is challenging without Mayor Noseworthy here.
Thank you. Yeah. It's challenging without Mayor Noseworthy here. She needs to be here, so we should continue this also. And I was also wondering, actually, kind of, I'll just throw it out there too, why, why, why we're doing it now. Couple of reasons why. Number one, I was talking with Jose about the work that staff is doing to come up with potentially recommendations on structure for our advisory boards. And that's gonna come out, it sounds like, in July, which is really quite soon. So I'm, I, I was kind of thinking that perhaps it might be best to even wait until after that, when we're all here.
I agree.
Okay, these things. So maybe we can push that.
Absolutely. I think this is, I mean, this is really at the council's pleasure of where they want to, to go with the boards and commissions. I did think of something after that, and I'm not sure if it plays a big role, but I do know that the mayor traditionally has some board representation at that position.
Correct.
Does. And so if that doesn't transfer over, I'm not sure how Mayor Noseworthy may feel waiting those few months before taking some of those, or I don't know if it automatically goes over.
You know what I would suggest? I would suggest that maybe we follow up with Mayor Noseworthy when she returns.
Absolutely.
And if, if it's an appropriate agenda item, to place just an agenda item on, switches for, for, you know.
She's already taken over on the mayor's advisory board, just so you all know.
Okay.
So.
What's the other one?
I'm trying to think of another one where the mayor is, the, the URA board, we've already done that.
We did that.
Pension, old hire.
Sorry.
Pension, old hire.
Yeah, and that's like quarter or year.
So that, yeah. So we can wait.
Yeah. And, and there's no really other option for pension and old hire anyway. It's not like she's gonna choose not to do those, because that's her position.
She's passionate about having it on the next council meeting. We can defer to them, but if not, let's go to July. Yeah.
Is that okay?
Right, right, right. There's council support for it, if she would like to put it on the agenda. Otherwise, we'll just push. Okay, that sounds good.
Have a discussion about structure.
Okay, then, so we'll continue that item for a later date. And then moving on to 13.2, boards and commission liaison reports.
On a couple, I think, yeah. I'll, I'll start, Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting on May 11th. advisory board meeting on May eleventh. The first item was the proposed community garden at Riverview Elementary School, which is a great, or actually, we had that presentation as well as a council, I think, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that was part, that was also in the Parks and Rec advisory board.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the old one.
Oh, okay. Mixing it up then, I guess.
Yeah, I was mixing it up. That was my fault.
So the the Riverview Elementary Science teacher has taken the the approach, the voluntary initiative to get a lot of partners involved in a community garden at the, a section of the Riverview Elementary School. The area, as you would drive in on the left, where the stairs are, there's concrete stairs. And it is a five-phase project. It's really, it's it's larger. I think it's a hundred lots. It has different stages. A hundred lots is one part of community garden. It has an an a glass dome option area. It has a central community park with herbal herbal garden area free to use. And there is, which is the main expense, would be a building for students. And he was looking to, he's working with Turi, the Parks and Rec director. He's got support from nine R. He's got significant funding already. Quite a bit of money. He's, he will probably bring something to council to look at for our support, whether that's in kind or the first one would be, well, already passed through Parks and Rec, but to work out more of the details with Turi, but it's a really great opportunity. So filling a gap after the, okay, community gardens. And and I look forward to the time when it comes to council as a presentation because there was, it was really a nice thorough presentation. Somehow I thought we already had that presentation. That was the key one and pickleball court discussion as we all hear about as well. And the majority of items were on the capital improvement project prioritization. And that is still ongoing, so that would be the next step.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I was not here for the natural transport meeting this past month, but the R H A, the Regional Housing Alliance, is moving forward with a job description for a interim, if you will, that might not be the right word, it might not end up being that way, executive director. Because what we actually prefer to do is have someone, at least for a three-year time period, so that's really not interim. The original concept was to go with consultants, but that has fallen through due to some just issues that have have arisen, so you will be seeing that request for people to apply here very soon, as soon as we finalize that. So that part's rather exciting. And then I kind of wanted to dovetail that with a couple of things that Scott said today in our, I believe it was our study session about funding coming available near the end of the summer for projects that are shovel-ready. And so that's one of the things that the R H A is searching for is they are kind of looking at being a funding coordinator. And so how can they coordinate those funding opportunities, those grant opportunities for those shovel-ready projects? So that's kind of where they where they stand right now.
Great.
Talking on shovel-ready projects and housing. Remind me, the Habitat presentation, wasn't that supposed to be during this?
No.
No, was it postponed?
They're, no, they're working with the
Staff.
Staff first, and then, and then we're gonna get a housing update and that'll be part of it.
That's right.
No, I didn't have any.
Okay, I just had a very quick one with Chamber. We had a meeting this morning. Tim with Bid was there presenting a letter, asking for a letter of support to support the Durango Arts and Conference Center. So the Chamber is deciding about wording on that. Downtown Clean Day is Friday, May twenty second. And they are meeting at eight thirty A M. at the Keller Williams parking lot. They usually start cleaning around nine and they go till eleven. It's a really fun event. I kind of mentioned it during the study session, but if people are around, it's a really gateway to just be involved in the community, help and clean up our town. And Girls Gone golfing for the Chamber is a costume party this year. It's a pirate theme, and it's on June third, and there's still teams available for golfing teams. They also take beginners. They take everyone, so that's a great event as well. So that's all, that's all for me too. And I think that's the last item on our agenda after a long day, correct?
Yeah.
Just put it away. So with that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.